To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion? Sorry, 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 my bad.
Yep, just wait. With the addition of nine point five, which is... Performance review of Brent Merrick.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by council member Monroe, seconded by council member Hank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are number four. Do we have any resident comments and quest- and/or questions for anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Beeler. Beeler. Nobody? All right. We have now two number five presentations and reports. I think we just go to the public hearing. Accurate? All right. Do I need a motion to open the public hearing? Okay. Let's just jump right into six point one, the 2019 Improvement Project. We're going to do this in a very orderly manner, so as we go through the process, if anybody has a question, we're going to have people come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, and then we'll enter your question into the record. What we're going to do is we're going to have Dan, our city engineer, go through the process, give our presentation, and then as questions are brought up, we're going to write them down, make sure that we get an answer to them, and go through the answers at the end of the presentation. So, I'll monitor that. With that, Dan, take it away.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable...
You said...
Honorable Mayor and...
Thank you.
...council members here. I'm here to talk about the 2019 Infrastructure Improvement Project here. With that, I'm going to get into general project timelines and key milestones, project summary, project financing and funding, city assessment policy and assessment area map, project summary and next steps, and of course, we're going to have plenty of time for questions and comments. I'm going to be trying to get those along the way. I have a number of questions that have come up along the project that we're going to try and answer in advance, but of course, we probably won't get everything, so leave plenty of time for questions. To date, what have we done here? We've had authorization to do some preliminary project scoping, completed soil borings and topographic work, walking open house, which was effectively a listening session. That was to try and gather input about the project and, you know, get the perspective from the residents who would be impacted by the work. There's authorized and completed appraisals for the value of the improvements that would be, would be done. Basically, what's the value of the, of the improvements to the, to the property owners if this project were to proceed? And completed a feasibility study, noticed residents were mailed, held a public open house, and called, you know, of course, the public hearing, which is what we're here doing tonight. Where we are is conducting the public hearing, approving the feasibility study, or if, if unamended, approving the feasibility studies. Certainly, that's a subject to discussion tonight. Potentially, authorize final design and order the improvements would be a topic for the evening. Then, moving forward, we'd be receiving, the council would be receiving plans and specs, authorizing and ad for bids, opening bids, of course, and then this one, order might change a little bit, but hold a final assessment, public hearing, and construct the project and close it out. The final assessment hearing might actually end up after construction, but those are the steps that are forthcoming in the effort. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the project, just for the benefit of all here, just, most of you know all the details on this, but of course, we'll, we'll go through item by item. What's really driving this? It's roadway facilities, the existing pavements in poor condition in many of these areas, and it's in need of reconstruction. Pedestrian facilities, of course, there's a number of links that are necessary here, and connecting some walkways, adding some trails. Municipal utility facilities is a very large one here. That one's going to be a notable topic of the evening here, that's extending water and sewer to some of the residents that have well and septic systems. So, for the purposes of organization here, the project's broken into about four groupings. Dietrich Drive and Kirchhill Drive noted as one on the, on the image up there. Elm Drive and, and street alley, or Casey's to Broadway is, you know, probably more appropriately known, but that's, that's just a street alley, and some work on a short stub of roadway. Elm Drive, I'll show you that in a little bit. Sunny Ridge Drive and Lyowood noted as three. Here is another pavement rehab project, and then Spring Creek Drive Trail has a little trail connection that would be necessary. So, we'll start with one of the larger ones here, Dietrich Drive and Kirchhill Drive roadway. That's, that's certainly a notable one for the evening here. The street width would be thirty-two feet from twenty-seven feet right now. It allows parking on both sides of the road. That's notable. Thirty-two feet's about the minimum that you would be going with for parking on both sides. Standard street section is three and a half inches of bituminous, eight inches of aggregate, which is a crushed rock, and twelve inches of sand. So, the current pavement's out there quite a bit thinner and, you know, break apart a little bit easier when there's not as much subgrade below it, and so this is going to be a good, robust section that you can build on in the future. Some of these areas can't even support a mill and overlay, where this section, you could mill and overlay it in the future. So, curb and gutter would be added, six-inch curb. That's the full height curb. Some of those subdivisions out there have these mountable curbs. This is six-inch curb and gutter, which means you'd have a little apron at each driveway. And then, of course, there's some sidewalk additions, which has been a topic of discussion, and certainly, one that will be talked about a little bit more into the questions, common questions. You're going to see there an alternate route being considered, that blue line. We're going to talk a little bit about why that's up there. The feasibility study evaluated the sidewalk shown in red up there, and that is, is being vetted based on some of the comments from residents as to whether or not that blue route should be considered further. Again, that wouldn't require amendment to the feasibility study. It can be handled in final design, but total estimated roadway project cost is $1,157,000 as an estimate of the, of the work.
Does that include, sorry, does that include the sidewalks?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sanitary sewer improvements here. There's an eight-inch sewer main to serve the properties here, proposed. The service would be extended to the right-of-way. Total estimated project cost for just the sanitary sewer to serve the subdivision is $406,000. Private connections would be separate by the owner from the right-of-way to the home. One thing to note from the study to what we're talking about tonight here is we'd potentially be looking at an alternate route to minimize impacts here. You see that, that dark, darker green line is, is what was originally considered, is deemed a little bit too impactful as far as tree losses and such, so an alternate's being considered in that lighter green line, which would be a drilled sewer line. So, it'd be a slight modification, but again, it'd be something that'd be handled in final design, not necessarily a full amendment to what is being done here, but more of a design scope.
Excuse me, Dan, which was the original one? The one on the left or then the right?
The one on the right.
Was the original?
Was the original in the study, and the right is the alternate. Water system improvements, eight-inch water main to serve properties currently, you know, getting their water from a well. Services, again, would be extended to the right-of-way. The property owners would be taking it from the right-of-way back to the, to the residents under a separate, separate construction effort under typically a privately selected contractor. Total estimated water main project cost would be about $300,000. And again, we'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about those private connections from, from the right-of-way to the residents. That's one of the topics of, of the assessments and how that would be covered. So, for those of you who are not really familiar with what's typically under a street, figured for, for the benefit of all, you wonder, why is this so expensive to run sewer and water? This is what's typically under a urban street. You've got the orange, which is storm sewer. We'll talk a little bit more about that here as far as how that's broken out, but the green is the sanitary sewers typically put down in the middle of the street and extend it out to the right-of-way and all the way into the, into the property. And then, the blue is the water main that runs from the water tower down the streets and distributes water down those service stubs to each residence. So, all that infrastructure ends up going in underneath this road. So, when we start talking about why is that being considered right now, you'd, you'd look at it and note that there's no way you could save almost any of that pavement. So, by the time you're done putting in sewer and water, all that pavement would be gone and replaced. So, a good time to do that is when there's no pavement there. Otherwise, it's all patched back in again. So, we're, we're going to get into that topic shortly, but that's why you really couldn't do this with patching work and saving a whole lot of the pavement. So, some comment, resident questions on this section is how was the sidewalk location selected? On Kirch, it's, it's fairly straightforward. There's an existing sidewalk there. That is, you know, the rationale is connecting to an existing sidewalk and extending it down the road, thinning up the boulevard a little bit as much as, much as possible. Boulevard's typical for a sidewalk, just for signage, and, and make sure there's some room for, room for setbacks for when doors are being opened for parked cars and such. So, just to get people off the curb line a little bit. And then, once you get down to Dietrich, the side of the road that was originally evaluated in the feasibility study was the east side. That was really just selected based on, based on the fact it was, it was more open. There was a tree on the other side of the road. There's a light pole and a hydrant on the west side. That doesn't mean it's not possible, it just means that was why it was originally considered. We are taking a look at the, that alternate side, the west side of the road with that blue alignment, and then down Fourth Street to connect to a sidewalk that is further to the north and, on the north side of the road and further to the east. So, there's, there's some rationale for that. These would be final design elements, can be modified after the discussions tonight, and, and ultimately would be left as some additional items requiring vetting as far as what the best path to go. But we have received a lot of questions on, you know, how, how was the sidewalk selected? So, where will the city project stop for sewer and water? It typically goes to the right-of-way, and then it becomes private, private connections at that point. Right-of-way is typically about ten feet behind back a curb, depending on the location, but it's, a lot of folks assume the curb line is the, is the actual right-of-way line. It, it goes back into their yard. So, even, even the city project would carry services into the residence yard until it was connected, which is, you know, going to be your right-of-way line. How are service connections made to my house that is typically going to be done through a private contractor? It takes the, it takes the service line that is stubbed out with the project and carries it into the residence home under a private contract. Can I use my water well for irrigation is another common question, and the city is allowing that or suggesting to allow that if there's no regulatory issues with the well. And so, that is being considered to be an, an option for residents should they, should they choose to. And then, why is the project being completed now is, is really the question of the night for, for many folks. It's an expensive project. What is really driving the effort is, is pavement, pavement rehabilitation. If you take a look at the left side here, that's, that's some of the pavement on the project, and it's in failing condition. Again, I mentioned the mill and overlay, which, you know, is, is one of those questions. Can you just mill and overlay it? If you were to mill and overlay this, it would just rubbleize. The street would just come apart and break up, and then you'd effectively end up removing all the pavement anyway and then going back to a reconstruct. So, when a pavement's in this type of a condition, or it's too thin, you can't mill and overlay it, you effectively are left with only one option, which is to reconstruct it, pull all the pavement out, and, and put it back together again. And so, the image on the right shows what it would actually look like. This is, that's the real width and what the, what the road section would look like with curb and gutter. And so, it's kind of an indication of how much pavement needs to be pulled up and put back. And during that time, well, the question really comes up, is sewer and water ever going to come to these neighborhoods? And if, if the answer to that question is yes, sewer and water would come to those neighborhoods at some point in time, then the time that you would typically recommend doing that is, of course, when all that pavement has been removed, and you can do all that subgrade work that we showed you in those figures. And so, what's really driving this is when that pavement's up, this is the time to make a decision as to whether or not those well and septics would become served by sewer and water. And so, some of the driving factors as well, what would happen if, if this was pushed off twenty-five years, for example, into the next cycle of pavement, pavement reconstruction? That is certainly an option. What, what would really come of that is over the next twenty-five years, sewer and water or septic systems would end up being subject to failure, subject to correction. That money would go into repairs on, on septic systems, and then after, after the, whatever period is, is, is held until it's done again, or considered again to do sewer and water, that money into those septic systems would, you know, possibly be at a loss because they would be abandoned at the time of sewer and water installation in the future. So, that money is somewhat at risk if, if residents put, put a lot of money into well and septic over the next, you know, period. Plus, you know, there's an inflationary index that typically would be associated with construction. Typical, the typical duration of twenty-five years might see about doubling of the, of the cost. $700,000 with sewer and water, you might see about one point, one point four million dollars over a twenty-five year period as to what would be the cost to do the work in the future. So, it's, there's, it's a tough, a tough question, but really where we leave it is when the pavement's off, the question is, is would you put the sewer and water at this time or wait quite some time? Patching it in the future would, would most definitely be much more expensive if, if it's in ten, fifteen years and all this pavement is put down. You would almost lose the entire street to put the sewer and water in. So, it would kind of be an either-or, most likely based on, on cost implications. So, so moving on here, I'll certainly address any questions that may come out of that as we move forward. But Elm Drive here, that's another segment of the project. The road width is twenty-four feet as a finished, finished product. Twenty feet is what it currently is now, so a little bit of widening. Standard street section, that's been used everywhere else here, is three and a half inches, eight inches and twelve. Curb and gutter would be installed. Water main replacement, as we talked about, when the pavement's gone, you go down there and you, you look at the services and, and sub, subgrade work and utilities, and so they'd be replacing services while the pavement is gone. And then, a one-way access is shown here, is in the study, that was considered for maintenance purposes. There really isn't a suitable turnaround right now for vehicles, and so one of the problems that, that was sought to solve is how do we get these, these vehicles to turn around reasonably? The one-way was considered an option. Alternates based on input from the public are being, you know, considered. They were originally vetted. This was kind of a guided alternative, subject to the comments that have been received to date. You know, you'll, well, we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. It could be modified. And so, the total estimated project cost was, in the study, $356,000 for this work. And so, I'm going to get into a little bit more about the one-way access opening that is shown here, because that was one of the more prevalent comments received from the, from the public open house. So, Elm Drive was originally looked at with a couple of ways to turn around. That, that red is a hammerhead, where they basically go down and they, they squeeze into that hammerhead area, and it gives you a little bit of wiggle room to back up and, and turn around. That requires a little bit easement from the residents. The yellow is cul-de-sac, not a big one, but a fairly small one. That, again, does get into the residence yard. The blue is the one-way. That was considered at the time to be least impactful, but, you know, we were getting a lot of feedback that that's not necessarily the case as far as those who live here are concerned. There's a lot of concern about cut-through traffic and such. And so, at this point here, we're looking at some other alternatives. And what is being vetted at this point is, instead of a roadway connection coming through there, it'd be a, a trail connection. So, it really wouldn't be open as a public road. It would be a, a trail connection. We, that, what's shown there is not necessarily any type of a full-size cul-de-sac. It's, it's a reduced cul-de-sac. It fits within right-of-way. And so, what we consider here is to be a little bit of a balance between, you know, what, what the goals of the project, which, you know, improve the pavement, try and make it a little bit more suitable for the larger vehicles to get turned around down there without backing into public driveways, which is, you know, never, never an ideal solution. I don't think most, most residents want, you know, vehicles to have to pull into their driveway, public driveway, or private driveway. And so, this, this offers a little bit of a balance of both. It, it would keep it from being any type of a public street and would be a plowed trail for the residents to use. So, again, this would not necessarily require an amendment to the feasibility study. It can be a feasibility, or it can be a, a change in the final design process. But as we go through here, we'll talk, street alley. It's a very simple one. We're just taking some of the aging pavements from about fifteen feet down to twelve feet. Standard section at a cost of about $105,000. So, some of the common resident questions on those elements are, why was the opening of the one-way street connection considered? It was, it was about circulation. It was, that was the main, main goal, is to try and make it so that there's a way out. You get down to the streets and can't turn around. That offered you a way out. I think we, we offered some alternatives that could be vetted, and now we have another alternative based on resident feedback that might, might be the way to proceed, but obviously subject to additional comments and, and review. So, can other alternatives, the one-way access be reviewed at this time? Absolutely. And this is, this is still a fair game at this point moving forward. This is just another idea to be considered, to solve the issues that are out there. How will I access, get, how will I get access during construction? There'll be a lot of feedback to these residents, especially it's a very narrow street, tough to get in and out during construction, and so we will be having some personal discussions with those residents about what to expect on the way in and out of a fairly tight, tight roadway here. So, another segment of the project is Sunny Ridge Drive, Lyowood Parkway. That roadway is, is widening out from twenty-two and a half feet rural to twenty-nine feet urban. Allows for parking on one side of the roadway. Lyowood Parkway is thirty-two feet. Right now, it's thirty-two feet, so it's pavement preservation primarily. Curb and gutter would be installed, standard street section, as we've talked about before. No sidewalks are planned at this time. They were originally considered, but with some feedback from, from the residents, the sidewalks are not being proposed at this time, based on what we've been hearing. And then, no lighting, again, it was originally considered, but we did get comments on it and made some adjustments on that. So, total estimated project cost is running around $750,000 for that section. So, Spring Creek Drive Trail is eight-foot bituminous trail connection from the meadows at Spring Creek Drive Development, and offers some conductivity to downtown. It's, again, includes some curb and gutter to handle drainage and runoff. A total estimated project cost for about $130,000 for that segment of trail, and is just included in the project as a necessary or recommended addition here to the, to the infrastructure improvements here. So, I'll talk a little bit about project funding and financing. This, this project would be financed through the sale of Chapter 429 General Obligation Bond. Just gives the city opportunity to sell a bond for street sanitary water main improvements and such. So, the proposed funding sources would be the city, city general fund to pay that back, special assessments, which is one of the big topics of the evening, which we'll be continuing to talk about, and the stormwater fund, which I'll explain that a little bit more also, as we pulled out some of the, some of the storm sewer into a special, special funding category for the 429 bond process. So, assessment policy review. The assessment policy of the city or standard practices, it'd be appropriate to state, is sixty, sixty percent city, forty percent assessed for project cost split. That was compared against a special benefit analysis in which appraisals are done. They basically evaluate what is the value increase of the property based on the improvements that are being proposed. And looking at the, the two of those, they compared them, and the special assessment benefit analysis was, was lower the numbers, and that was certainly the way that we had to proceed. So, but keep in mind, if the sixty, forty would have come in lower, that certainly would have been considered as, as the alternate. So, ultimately, the goal was, is what is, what is the lowest assessment amount that, that is possible while going through the 429 process. So, that's the purpose of comparing and contrasting these, because it wasn't necessarily given that the assessment, the assessments would be lower. So, what that results in is approximately seventy-eight percent city contribution and twenty-two percent assessed, including all project components, which is important, because that's a little bit different than what you'll see in the study, which is going to be around seventy-six percent. And I'm going to explain that, that on the last slide as to how that, how that plays out. What's important is you'll note that the minimum assessment split is eighty percent and twenty percent. With twenty percent being the, the very important minimum, you have to have twenty percent assessed in order to, to use the 429 bonds. And so, that's, that's a very important number to hit as you go forward. And so, I'll explain that in a second here as we, as we explain the total project cost splits. So, the assessment map, who's being impacted? There's sixty-six properties located in the project area with one city property, so that would result in sixty-five properties proposed to be assessed for a street, and if a, a street sewer and water's going to be a function of the benefit here, you'd be looking at $25,000. So, for those that are receiving the street sewer and water, is, is $25,000 plus connection fees and plus the cost to connect. And so, that's, that's how that plays out. You've got the, the benefit of $25,000 plus the, the connection fees and the private connection cost for a contractor to bring it to your house. The street reconstruction costs, if it's just street reconstruction benefits, here is a praise that $8,000 of benefit for just the streets. So, getting into the connection fees, which, which are notable questions on that. The city sewer connection fee is $834. City water is $6,426. And note, there's, there's a, a credit that is being recommended of $825 on that connection fee, based on a 1994 Improvement Project Assessment. That, that was an opportunity that was, was reviewed to determine, you know, if, if this could apply against the water connection fee. The basis of that is they're, they're assessed a certain amount when water was brought near the subdivision, and that is being applied with, with some inflationary, you know, indexes applied to come up with $825 that they've already paid towards, towards this connection fee. So, that's the rationale behind that. Met Council is a cost of $2,485. It's the approximate private connection costs for sewer and water services can be around five to $10,000. Varies certainly a notable amount based on the residents and the, the difficulty of the connection. It's just an approximation. The assessment area map is, is going to include Elm Drive and down there at the alley, for, between Broadway and Casey's here. So, the street reconstruction cost remains $8,000 for Elm, and the alley reconstruction cost per unit ended up being $1,200 for the benefit of the alley improvements. So, here's the project costs. I'm going to explain a little bit about the storm sewer and how that played out. Total estimated project cost, $3,900,000, $907,000. Total assessed amount proposed is $860,000. Now, if you take that $860,000 and factor that against the $3.9 million, there's your, there's your seventy-eight percent, twenty-two percent cost split. The total estimated city costs, of course, with that, is $3 million. Now, here's where the, the storm sewer's split out and it comes into play here. If you look at the 429 bond amount, it's $3.2 million. The storm sewer fund was separated out as a hundred percent city costs. The reason being is seventy-eight, twenty-two is a little bit too close for comfort for the 429 process. If the bids came in, in such a fashion that the minimum of twenty percent was not hit with the 429, that would, that would not be a desirable outcome as far as, you know, meeting the rules and regulations as far as the 429 process.
You'd have to start all over.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to end, end with that type of a scenario. So, what, what ultimately is done is you pull out a certain portion of it, which is the storm sewer. There's a separable amount, and then you end up with seventy, about, about a seventy-six percent split on the 429 bond. So, you'd look at the, the 429 bond of $3.2 million against the $860,000, and that gives you a more conservative percentage against, you know, what, what that minimum of twenty percent would be based on bid variability that could come up. So, hopefully, that explains why the percentages are a little bit different and why we're talking about seventy-eight, twenty-two as being the really cost split between city contributions to the project and, and what is being assessed. So, the estimated bond rate, we estimated a bond rate just for the purposes of, of giving some annual, you know, approximation. It was a cost of three and a half percent with fees factored in and such. Four and a half assessment rate was, was used. That would yield an annual payments ranging from about $93 to $1,900. That, again, does not include connection fees, should, should that be included, which we'll talk a little bit about in the next few slides. So, some of the common questions that have come up here is can connection fees be added? So some of the common questions that have come up here is, can connection fees be added to the assessment? The answer was determined to be yes, they can. Certainly, residents would be advised to come forward with that request, so it could be built into the process. Can my construction cost to make my service connections be assessed? That means if they hire a private.
You repeat that first one, sorry. Can my connection fees be added to my assessment? Your answer was yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So the second one being, can my construction cost to make my service connections be assessed? Again, that was vetted and determined to be yes as well, in which case a resident could hire a private contractor to make their connections from the right way to their house, and there's certain stipulations on how that has to play out, but there is a method in which that was allowable, and, again, residents would be advised to come forward making that request and say, "I'd like to do this," try and add that to their assessment. But it is something that is an opportunity to be considered, so.
Okay. I just want to clarify on that. Larry, you're comfortable with that?
Provided that the city controls the contracting process, and there's a written agreement with the property owners whereby they agree to it, yes, we can do that.
So there's a number of avenues to go that we need to see clarification on, but it is a possibility to have construction costs to make the service connections be assessed by the city?
Yes, and with the connection fees, but it's going to require a separate agreement between the city and each property owner that wants to do that, so the city needs to know.
Thank you.
Okay, so additional questions that have come up is, how long will I have to pay back the assessment? Typical ranges are 10 to 20 years for the term on these. In this particular case, it's a larger assessment amount. You know, we haven't set a term, or that's still subject to, you know, council determination, but 20-year has been assumed as a possibility, given the amount to the assessments. Typically, it doesn't go much longer than 20 years, because at some point in time, you're outliving the life of the improvements. But, you know, again, that's the ranges that are typical, it's 10 to 20 years. How long do I have to connect once sewer and water is available? 90 days is the typical period. I know there's been some opportunities discussed as to whether or not residents would be given an extended period, but the typical practice is 90 days to connect, and that's certainly another topic of discussion based on whether or not it would be... Go ahead.
Can we clarify that that's 90 days from notification?
But 90 days from.
Not from end of project, from when you're notified.
90 days from notification, yeah. And so it can vary a fair amount from the time when construction is completed as to when the notice goes out. It might be six months, 10 months, 12 months, but whatever the case may be.
The last one was seven months, and then had 90 days from then.
I believe so, yes. So there'll be another topic of discussion as far as when those connections would need to occur, and what the allowances would be for that connection, so. Some of our questions, can the city waive connection fees, given the large amounts of the assessments here? I guess the most appropriate answer is no, that would not be a typical practice here. You know, policy is kind of the key with implementing projects like this, and consistency to that policy. If connection fees are, you basically waived on one, would it have to be considered on everyone to waive connection fees? How do you make the determination as to when the fees would be applied and when wouldn't they? So typically, you defer back to the policy, and that's how the rate structures are set, that when there's connections, there's the fees. But that would be the quick answer to it. It could be, you know, a little bit more complicated than that if it was pressed, but we typically would say no, that would not be the practice that would be considered. So is there another way to fund this without assessments, not to use the 429 process? So I guess the answer to that would be no. Brent certainly can elaborate more on this, but we believe that this is the most cost-effective way to fund this as far as the city is concerned, based on past practices and policies, so. So some of the next steps that are going to be necessary here is, of course, there's an improvement hearing tonight. There'll be a number of questions. Hopefully, we answered a number of them through this discussion here, but I would imagine there'll be more questions that I have not covered, excepting the feasibility study. If there's no major scope changes, of course, deleting the sewer and water or something of that nature would constitute a major scope change to the study. But for the most part, some of these sidewalk discussions that we've talked about, and some of these revisions to Elm Drive, those would be final design changes from the time of acceptance of the study to acceptance of the final plans. Consider a motion to order the improvements. That also would be a possibility tonight. If accepted here, that would start the final design process, in which case you would be, you know, next contacted to authorize the plans for bidding. Please note that ordering the improvements does require a four-fifths vote through the 429 process, so that is for supermajority requirement.
So four-fifths is four out of five?
Four out of five. Yep. So next steps would be, obviously, the final plans, accept the plans, authorize for bidding, of course, open bids, award the project. Those are additional steps in the future.
Okay, so could I just ask, in terms of, like, just going through this process, I think we have a pretty good feel for finalized design, but when are we looking at potentially opening bids and awarding the project? Do we have a timetable?
Yeah, we looked at February. February, March would be, you know, reasonable. We're targeting February.
Yep.
And then, of course, final steps are construct the project and complete construction. The assessment hearing was originally looked at as potentially in the spring, but it may and very well could be after construction, so that step can vary a little bit, but is certainly a necessary step in the process, so.
So opening bids in 2019, February, when would you anticipate completion of construction and the closeout of the project?
Project this size would be September, October would be the targeted timelines to finish it up. Of course, you know, most work would be all the way through November for some of the cleanup work, but majority of it is going to be right through September, October.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we will be opening up to questions, comments, and discussion. That concludes the summary of the project. Hopefully, it answers your questions, and.
Well, I appreciate that. I think it puts it on the table. I'm going to open it up to the council first, to see if there's any obvious questions, comments, and then we'll open it up to the public. Anyone have any questions? Oh, Dan?
When we're looking at Dietrich and Kirchi Hill, we're talking about widening the street from 27 feet to 32 feet, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then, if sidewalks were to go in, how much boulevard between the sidewalk and the curb are you expecting, and then what would the width of the curb be? I'm sorry, the width of the sidewalk.
Sidewalk's five feet. The boulevard was narrowed out a little bit in that area to four feet. That's a little bit narrower than what's already out there, but it was.
Five at mine.
What's that?
It's five at mine, but so what? Yeah, that is.
Okay.
Narrow.
Yep, yep, and so that's, generally speaking, you're looking for a minimum boulevard, it's around four feet if possible for grass and signage and stuff like that, and you start getting too narrow, it's hard to have grass there, it usually dies off.
So we're looking at about nine feet then?
Yep, about nine feet.
And then we've already, would have widened the road by another five.
Yep.
Yep, so 11, okay. I have a question about the alley. So the alley is at 15 feet, and it's being narrowed down to 12 feet. Is there a reason that it's going to be narrowed?
Just following a standard, really. It's trying to bring it back to a standard practice. If alleys are intended to be 12 feet across the city, this would be an opportunity to start bringing it to a uniform standard.
The Elm Street, the trail width on that, have we talked about that, so that it doesn't look like a drive-through, if it's not to be, if we don't want traffic to accidentally be going through there?
I assume we'd have a bollard too, wouldn't we?
I would say that the bollard wouldn't necessarily be put in there, because that trail would intended to be plowed, so that it, you know, can be utilized in the wintertime. And so the plow would drive right through there, in which case the bollard would stop that, so. But it would be a clear trail with pet ramps on either end, eight to 10 feet is typical, eight foot's a typical trail width, so that would be the width that's being considered, again, subject to final reviews and approvals.
Brian, Skolk, can your plows get through an eight-foot trail all right, or do you need the 10?
Yep, at this time, we have equipment to get through on an eight-foot.
Eight-foot?
Eight-foot wide.
When we were looking at the cost for the $6,426 for the water connection, it says $825 credit. Was that already taken out, so the dollar amount is the 6,400, or is the 825 being subtracted from that 64?
Being subtracted.
Subtracted.
When we were looking at the new sidewalk configuration, you were looking at connecting it down to, front of Lisa Lorraine's house, on Fourth Street there where it comes up to the top of the church? Is that where the blue line goes to?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
And that was on the north side of Fourth Street?
West side. North side, west side, yes. So you don't have to cross the street again. You'd rather cross here than... Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. On the project cost summary page, right before common questions, it says estimated annual payments range from $93 to $1,922. So a person who is paying the highest assessment possible for this project, the most they'd be paying is $1,922 a year?
That's based on $25,000, so that'd be the highest assessment.
Okay.
Not including connection fees on a 20-year term.
Okay.
So obviously, that number varies based on the term selected, but yes.
So 20 to 2,200.
Yep.
Any more questions?
No.
Johnson?
Nothing from me.
I have a couple. The cul-de-sac at Elm Chief, have you guys had a chance to look at that cul-de-sac on Elm for a turnaround for emergency vehicles? All right, we're taking that into consideration, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, it's all going to be vetted, you know, based on the revisions that are being proposed, so yes, it will be.
Cool. These guys need to be happy. If we don't hit, I think this might be a Larry question, if we don't hit the 80-20 for 429 bonds, do we have any financing options for this project? Is 429 essentially it?
429 is essentially it.
Thank you. And then, as I looked through here, it said 66 properties located in the project area, one city property. Is that 66 properties, including the one city property, or is it 67 properties with the one city property?
66, including the city property.
Thank you. The question that I have there is, on that, what is the, I didn't see it in here on the assessments, but what have we charted, what is the city property in there? Which property is it?
The property noted is just a remnant on the east side of Lislewood Parkway, so the city's standard practice is to assess itself, or that's what we've done on past projects.
What's the number that we put on that?
I couldn't, we can look into that, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that is.
All right. It is, I just didn't, I didn't see it, and some of them are, it's all right.
Here, here it is.
Speak to me.
It's, uh...
Zero.
So our standard practice would be to assess at the same amount that other properties in the area, so we'd, I'd recommend a...
So numbers can go down?
I'd recommend to the city engineer and the council that that be assessed at the $8,000 amount, consistent with the rest of the properties.
Just want to make sure that that's noted, that's all. All right. Counsel, anyone else? Nope, go ahead.
Back to the sidewalk connection that's going, the proposed one in the blue line on Fourth Street, if that carries all the way down to where that curb cut at the end of that sidewalk is now, there's at least one additional house along there that is not in this assessment study, is that correct?
Correct.
Or is it two? So how do you propose, moving forward, with a sidewalk in front of houses that aren't being assessed?
So you couldn't assess that property because it wasn't notified during the public hearing? So that's something the council will have to contemplate. At a minimum, the sidewalk would be brought to Fourth on the west side of Kirchi, or is it Dietrich?
Dietrich.
Dietrich?
It's Dietrich.
If you wanted to connect it, you'd either have to do it through project costs, or come back and try to assess that property, but as.
Which would lower the other assessments.
But as we found out through our special benefit analysis, the sidewalks aren't a determining factor in the special benefit analysis. It's primarily for the street reconstruction, curb gutter, et cetera, so it would be pretty hard for the city to prove out a property benefit or a value benefit on a sidewalk improvement, so.
For just sidewalk improvement?
For just sidewalk, so the city would likely have to pay 100 percent of that project. But a very good point, that's something that the sidewalk comment was received by a resident during the open house, and so in order to be, create kind of a context for having a dialogue, we asked the city engineer to prepare an alternate just for discussion. But to your point, all the consequences or unintended consequences of that decision haven't been vetted. It'd be based on feedback from the council and residents that we received tonight.
Okay, thank you.
They've assessed sewer and water though previously, haven't they? Those two residences that are affected by that sidewalk, proposed?
Correct, they're on city sewer and water.
You have a question now?
Yes, I do now.
We just keep talking, you come up with questions.
See? Dan, you mentioned for the bonding, that it would be a 10 or a 20-year. Is that, is 20 years the ceiling, or can it go longer than that?
Well, I might have to defer that one to Larry. I don't know if you can go longer than 20 years, it's just typically the 10, 20 years is kind of capped, because the improvement life is, especially for streets, is often considered to be 20 years, but I would defer to Larry as to whether or not there'd be any limitations on that from the process.
20.
20 is the ceiling. Thank you.
20. He's a man of few words. Any other questions on the council level? Staff? Sorry, partners? I don't like calling you guys staff. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Those with questions, please come on up, introduce yourself. I'm actually going to read one part that I didn't actually read, but those wishing to address the city council should come forward, state your name and address for the record. After all the comments are received, the public hearing will be closed. No further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. So what we're going to do is take the public comments, questions, we'll have staff make a note, put them down, give them a little bit of time to kind of organize their thoughts and put together an answer. We'll get their answers towards the end and move forward from there. So come on up. We know you.
Counsel, my name is Jeannie Anderson. I live at 1020 Sunny Ridge Drive.
Hi, Jeannie. You can sit down if you like.
So I don't have any questions specifically about the assessment and the need for improvements. The concerns that my husband and I had were when we saw the plans with regards to the no parking signage. From our perspective, our neighborhood doesn't really have issues, and parking on one side of the street isn't really that big a deal. Nobody parks that often on both sides of the street to begin with, and it's sort of intuitive when a road isn't large enough. The signs on the plan, obviously, aren't final, but they were concerning to us because the way that they were placed was simply, I assume, by distance, and they were showing up in the middle of people's lots, effectively right in front of their homes. So this is an area where we're not looking at having sidewalks or boulevards, and from our perspective, we would like to not see, no parking signs in our neighborhood. If there do need to be parking signs, we would request that they actually be on the side lot lines instead of in the middle of people's yards. And then the final comment that we had is the parking was set up so that the parking would be on the same side of the street that all of our mailboxes are, which to us is probably a bigger inconvenience than having parking on one side of the street if it's placed.
Maybe we could put the parking signs right next to your mailboxes, too.
Well, it was set up so that the no parking would be on the opposite side, so everyone would be parking potentially in front of mailboxes, which is the bigger concern anyway.
Got it. So noted. You guys got that?
You guys got that?
Yep.
That was it?
Thanks, Jeannie, good to see you. Alan, I knew you were coming up. You can't yell at me in front of all these people.
Hi, I'm Alan Hmzinski, I live on 1023 Sunny Ridge, and I thought I'd get up here real quick, as long as we're talking about the Sunny Ridge project. I've been to the street walkthrough and the meeting on August 6th, and it, it had never been brought up, and this is a question for Dan, about widening this street. Now, I see on tonight's agenda that the proposal is to go from 22 and 1/2 to 29 feet in width, and what, what's the reason for it? It, it doesn't seem to make any sense, it's not a through street.
What's that? Okay. As instructed, we'll answer the questions at the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, thank you, Alan. Always intuitive. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Not bad.
My name's Jaren Steinbach, and I live at 708 Kerchi Hill Drive.
You're my neighbor!
Yep. Anyway, I just wanted to say that the numbers, as they're proposed on the sheets that we got, they should be considered as a financial burden, rather than an, an assessment, and even if, well, my first question would be, when you guys talk about that if we could roll all these fees into one, one lump sum, and pay it that way through taxes, is it all subject to the 3 and 1/2 to 4% interest rate? Is that something they have to answer at the end?
Yeah, we'll get that at the end. I'm going to assume yes, but we'll, we'll just put them all together.
Okay. So, you know, with that, the way I figured it out, is that at 4% interest, and you add on the $60 water bill that we'll have to start paying, and that's what we're given by the city as a, like, a two-person average water bill, that ups my monthly costs about 250 bucks a month, which is, when I bought my house in 2013, you know, after, you know, going through the process with the mortgage loan officer, and, you know, talking to friends and parents and all that, and finding out what the fluctuation is between, you know, with, with taxes rising, and maybe an assessment here and there, and homeowners insurance and things like that, I had a window that I bought my house in for what I'd pay per month for a, for payments, a mortgage payment, and I just, you know, I, I budgeted for what I bought my house for, not an extra 100, 200, or, you know, 200-plus dollars a month, it's just not, it's just not what I signed up for, I didn't, you know, I just, I can't afford that. And, you know, with, with that said, some cost reduction ideas that, that my neighbors and I came up with is obviously the, the $825 credit, which is, you know, thank you for considering that. That's a start, but I think the, and also, the sidewalk that's estimated, that I saw in the packet for tonight's meeting, at $20,600, if you got rid of that, that would also, another idea, that would also, you know, save each homeowner about $735 on the assessment, if you could do it that way. And then, also, I think the meat and potatoes of all this is that the city sewer and water connection fees of, you know, the $834 plus the $6,426, which adds up to $7,260, you know, if we could waive those, that would be huge, because it's about, you know, it's about, I figure it to be about 52 bucks on every 12 and 1/2 thousand, that would, you know, that'd lower our monthly rate another 50 bucks, almost, with all those bundled together. And, another idea that we had is that, is also brought up in the presentation, is that if you could give us, if, if you could come up with something to where we wouldn't have to connect right away, and let us use our well and septic until one or the other breaks, and then we could come back and connect then, that'd also give us time to, you know, save up for that connection, or maybe be in a better spot to do that. So that was another idea. I mean, if you add all those together, you'd bring the total back down to almost $26,000 for a total assessment with, with no fees and whatnot, and that brings my monthly mortgage payment increase back down to 105 to $110, and then you add on the, the $60 water, water bill a month, and then, you know, that's a more livable, that's a more viable solution for people like me in that neighborhood. So anyway, those are some cost reduction ideas that we had, and, and I'm, I'm really interested to hear about, if we can lump everything together, what interest rate that would be at, and what that would mean for paying it back that way. Other than that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Hey, before you, before you go, I just want to be sure that we got each structure of that question, so that we can get back to it.
I didn't catch your first name, sir.
Jaren.
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 I'm keeping a list of questions, and then, as we go back, we'll make sure that we address each one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief?
How are you?
Good.
I'm Brent Cummins, I'm at 421 Dietrich.
Brett?
Brent.
Brent, with an N, like Brent.
There's another Brent.
Yeah.
My question, I just wanted more information about the storm runoff, because that goes right through my yard. So, there was a couple different options at the beginning, kind of just went over pretty fast, so just more information on that, and, yeah, and just talking about how that works with the easement through there.
Sure.
That one, I know we can answer. You got that, Brent? Dan?
Okay. Yes.
Eric? Come on, Eric.
My name is Joyce Tony, and I live at 703 Kirchhill Drive, and as Jaren stated, his ideals are awesome, a bunch of us, our neighborhood thinks that that would be a financial help for all of us property owners on Kirchhill and Dietrich Drive. The sidewalk, which would be going right through my front yard, basically, I feel that none of our neighborhood, when you guys did the walkthrough, we said we don't want it. I hope you guys consider scratching, going through our front yards on Kirchhill Drive, because I don't really think there's a need for it, especially with widening the roads an additional five feet. You're talking about 11 feet into my front yard. Now, I don't know if you guys would enjoy that or not, I've lived there for 35 years and never had that. As Jaren also said, extending the time for the hookup, that would be an awesome thing. If we could only have that 25,000 assessment initially, we wouldn't feel the pain quite as bad. If you could give us the extension, you know, two to five years, whenever our septics would fail, having a maximum time limit, and then have to pay the connection fees, I think that would give us a break, and financially, let us all prepare for it a little bit better. The $500, I think I had talked to Brett about that, or Brent. I don't know what kind of rate you're figuring, you know, for the last 24 years, if we did it at 3%, it would've been over $1,000. In my, how I calculated, at least, I used a online calculator, and it, not the $825, you know, $200 here is $200 for us, so if you can relook at that, you know, when we're talking the dollar amounts, every dime for us is helpful. That's all I have.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you, thank you, Joyce. Come on up.
Steve Squares, 109 Carver Creek Circle, I don't live in the affected area, but my questions are related to the 78% that the city's picking up. I'm assuming that that cost is being distributed to the other taxpayers in the city? Yes, no? And then, basically, what's the incremental tax burden in $50,000 increments to homeowners?
Speak into the microphone, please.
What's the incremental cost, what's the, what's the impact to other taxpayers in the city in $50,000 increments related to their home values?
So on the other, on the 78%, is your question?
Yep. And then, how many other areas within the city are you planning on doing improvements for city, for sewer, water, for similar projects, and what's the impact, you know, over the course of the next 20 years to those homeowners, to the rest of the city?
Got that, Brently?
Good.
Thanks, Steve. We're not all just staring at you, I promise you that. You're, you're next, you're next. No, you come on up. We're, we're directing traffic. Have a seat.
Hi, Kaylee Swanson, 707 Kirchhill Drive.
Kaylee, right?
Yeah, Kaylee. Pretty simple question, I was wondering if lighting is included for Kirchhill, and I don't know if we talked about that, but I assume if we get sidewalks, we'd get lighting? And then, same as everybody else, do we need to widen it by five feet, and do we need sidewalks? If we do get sidewalks, I would like to see it connect on Fourth, because that is a busy road, and right now, I have a three-year-old, and we jump across the street, and then jump back across the street, so obviously, that's not ideal, but that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought for sure somebody'd jump up just to...
Hi, I'm Anna Dingler, I live at 417 Dietrich. I have a couple of questions. First is, I was reading through the feasibility report, and it, there was a comment on the assessments about $3,000 credit for the septic system, I just wanted to understand what that is. Didn't really know. So, and then, next question, just general impact during construction for access to your homes, I assume at some point, we're not going to be able to drive or park, so what is kind of the plan of where that can happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. I like, you just took charge, too, you're basically sitting down.
Steve Kaczka, 113 Crest Circle. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I have got a number of questions, but I want to make sure I heard this correctly, since this is the first time I've attended this meeting. Did I understand 3.9 million dollars of street and sewer connections over a period of time? About?
No.
About? Doesn't have to be the exact number.
Yes.
Wait.
Yes.
Wait, say that, no, say that question again.
About 3.9 million dollars in sewer and pavement improvements over time?
Oh, sewer and pavement.
And did I also understand approximately 66 properties that are paying for that? Did I get that right?
66 are being assessed, the entire city is paying for it.
Okay. So that's roughly $60,000 per property. 59. Do the math, it's about 59,000. Just, I needed to, I needed to get that in my own head, since I'm new to Carver, not new to Chaska, though, I've been there 30 years. So, with that being said, does the eight-inch water main improvement, that's rolling back way to the front of your PowerPoint presentation, does that have an assessment associated to the people that are being served, or is that spread out over the entire city, or assessed properties?
And we'll answer them at the end.
Help me out.
What's that?
Say it again.
We'll answer all the questions at the end, we're going through and getting, so that they can have time to put a thought process together.
No, no problem. And, do the, do the pavement improvements that we're, we're discussing, are those associated with the properties that are appreciating the improvement, or is that also assessed over the entire city? And can we narrow down the 93 to 1,900 and some dollars assessment, and be a little, I mean, that's...
Yes.
I mean, really?
The answer is yes.
Please do, because that's just craziness, I mean, I'm a business guy, you're a business guy.
It's there.
It's, it's, it's ridiculous, and it needs to be, it needs to be clear.
And it will be.
Thank you very much. That's all you got.
Thank you, Steve.
Certainly.
It's Steve, right?
You got it. I buy coffee from you.
I know, I recognize you!
Every once in a while, I come and buy coffee from you.
Hi, Michael Ankees, I'm a non-resident, but looking at purchasing a home in the impacted area. For homes where a new sidewalk will come through a driveway, will the individual homeowner be responsible for the reconstruction of the driveway from the, where, in between the sidewalk and the road, and if so, what will that be?
That's a good question. Thank you.
Chief?
Nothing?
How you doing?
Hello, Nathan Dingler, I live on 417 Dietrich Drive. One of the things that we're talking about is the additional five feet of road on Dietrich Drive. My wife and I were trying to figure out if that'd be five feet on one side, two and 1/2, and two and 1/2.
Two and 1/2.
Just kind of figuring out the split there, and then also, kind of, kind of popped up into my head, but Dietrich isn't really a, you don't have to hop on Dietrich to get to downtown Carver, you don't really need to hop on Dietrich for anything unless you live on Dietrich Drive.
Go to Chief's house.
I know. Exactly, I mean, if we have, I got to talk to him, I got to go down a couple roads, but anyways, is the addition of the street, the five feet, is that just for the sidewalks, which I also love the sidewalks, I think it'd be a great benefit, but I also don't think that adding another five feet to the road for just parking purposes is necessary on our drive, because it's not a through street to get to anywhere.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Rudolph? No, Eric, nothing? Okay. Wow. You still matter, Eric.
Ron Tuning, 703 Kirchhill Drive. I was just wondering, these houses in Dietrich and Kirchhill, we've been paying taxes since the sewer and water was put in down here, and I'd like to know how we, none of our tax dollars have gone to that, how it was separated from our tax dollars to that, and also, when we did the walk-around...
Could I just clarify, did you guys understand that question? Because I didn't. Okay, all right, all right. Good.
And also, when they did, they did the walk-around originally, I asked a question if the homeowners would be able to do any part of that, for instance, taking the part of the driveway out, and if you got a cement driveway, or a tar driveway, do that on your own, because I take it the city is paying for that? That's the two questions I had.
Thank you.
Got that, Brent? Dan? Nice, you're typing fast. Eric? Oh, no, please, we'll wait for Eric. Lori? No questions? How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. Not bad?
I'm Pete Harden, 200 Elm, and I've got a question, you've got three options...
You've got three options for Elm Drive. And I'm not sure what the determination will be made on, but is the cost of each improvement a factor?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait. Brent, was this, yes, it's a factor? Or yes, you understood the question?
Yes, I understood.
Okay, thank you.
A secondary question would be, will the homeowners along Elm have an input based on the cost estimates, which will reflect on our assessments?
Sure. We understand the question.
Thanks Pete.
Chief? Eric, wait, oh! Oh! I just gotta keep saying Eric and people...
Hi, I'm Sarah Fetter. I live at seven one two Kirchhill Drive. And I grew up in the house that I live in right now. And I just want to say that I love the neighborhood as it is. And I know right now, the proposed sidewalk across the street is going to take down three beautiful maples. And the person who lives at that house couldn't be here tonight. But those maples, to me, mean far more than the sidewalk will. So, you know, take that into consideration. Those trees are forty years old and they're amazing, and they're going to live another hundred, far longer than that sidewalk will live. And I know none of us in the neighborhood want that sidewalk, so it's just something to think about. And then also, I just have to say that what Jaren said earlier, we've all sort of talked in the neighborhood, we're all very close. And from who I've talked to, we all agree with him wholeheartedly, so just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric? No, I'm just kidding. I saw you get up, I saw you get up. Oh, Glenn finally knows somebody.
Leetish Slutter, four thirty-seven Diedrich Drive. I had one more question. The curbs that are coming in for the sewer, they were the standard curb with the drop-down for the driveway, correct? Not the universal curb? Okay. And my input too is sidewalks in the neighborhood, I don't think are necessary either. I don't care if it's Kirchi Hill or Diedrich. There's so little traffic coming down those two stretches of road that, in my opinion, we don't need sidewalks either. I have another question. I heard somewhere from somebody, were they planning on stubbing in a pipe for sump pumps into the storm sewer? I thought I heard that from somebody.
What?
I've never heard that before.
You've never heard that?
No.
Okay, well then it's not coming in, because the whole neighborhood and nobody up there has a sump pump.
I don't have one either.
Yeah. That's what I mean. But I've heard that, you know, I don't know where I got it from, but...
You know what?
What was your first name, sir?
Lee.
Lee? L-E-E. It was Lee.
Please, start rumors.
Garage doors and the sump pumps. Guys better be nice to me, I won't fix your doors.
You guys need some help.
And you know I'm gonna need you.
Thanks Lee.
Thanks Lee. Thanks for knowing Glenn. Eric?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a kind of a built-up set of questions.
Yes, we do. You want to start answering?
If I'm okay with the council, I'll run through them.
Please do.
And my, what we're going to attempt to do is answer the questions. I won't be restating comments on the project for emphasis. I'll list the questions. So if, after we get through this, and if there's a resident that didn't hear the question that they asked, we'd invite them to come back if...
Did everyone hear all of that? Okay. So I've got a list here, so I've got, Genie?
Yep, so I'll start with...
Jean Anderson.
Genie.
Genie.
Is it Genie or Gene?
It's Genie.
So I'll defer to Dan on the question, why no parking on Sunny Ridge? And the related sign placement on lot lines? And the parking situation as relates to the placement of the existing mailboxes?
Go Dan.
Okay, as far as the sign question on no parking, I mean ultimately, it's parking on one side only, so intent would be to guide that.
What's the basis, though, for having parking on one side? What are we, what is the city trying to accomplish, is the question?
Well generally, that's, you know, flexibility for the residents to, generally, it's a resident improvement and keeping some minimum street widths for standardization of the roads. You get down much narrower than that and start getting in some very narrow streets.
Can you speak to emergency vehicles and your thought process behind street width? I think that's kind of the basis of the width as it relates to parking on one side or both sides?
Well, certainly, I mean, you're, you're going to need to make sure you've got emergency access. I mean, of course, streets can get blocked off if you have two cars parked on either side of the road and the width isn't there, you're actually going to limit emergency vehicles. Same thing with one side of the road. If it's, if it's a little bit narrow, you can allow parking on one side. And if it's not, not guided as such, you know, you can get, you can get widths in there that actually limit, limit access to the, to the roadways or to the residents. So, I mean, it's a combination of serviceability and, and emergency access and standardization.
So could the street width be reduced on Sunny Ridge?
Could it be reduced, the twenty-nine foot, why twenty-nine feet? I would say it's, it's already very narrow. I mean, twenty-two feet is, is well below the norm for a street, for a street, so twenty-nine is already, we typically run at thirty-two. So I would say this is already, already somewhat of a narrower street section.
And the last time that we talked, my understanding was that twenty-nine was the minimum that we'll do and have city-sponsored streets. So the development on County Road Forty, the Klingelitz Development, those streets didn't meet city standards, so we had them do private streets, and then we wouldn't approve them as official city streets.
Yeah, that's, standardization is everything. You know, we're making a lot of judgments on, based on current circumstances as to what's appropriate. Again, you typically run with a little bit wider street, but twenty-nine was somewhat of an in-between as a minimization, yet still trying to get to those standards.
Thank you.
So then, as it relates to sign placement on lot lines, I can answer that, and that our field staff can go out and mark, place those signs at lot lines.
Sure.
As it relates to the side of the street that the no parking sign goes, and Dan, you can interrupt me, but that, maybe that's basically a council prerogative. You can choose the side or the neighborhood can provide input, that they'd rather have it on the north side as opposed to the south side.
Sure.
With that said, there's, there could be, it could be unanimous, or you could have half want it on the north side and half want it on the south side. So council might need some additional feedback on that.
There's five of us.
The street width question from Alan, I think was covered with Dan's comment, but if we get through this and Alan has additional questions, we can certainly address those. As it relates to Jaren's comments, the city would charge an interest rate on the connection fees. We've done that in the past. We had a property owner in two thousand and thirteen, I believe, on Skyview Lane. That family wrapped in their assessment along with their connection fees and their cost of their private connection, and there was an interest charge. This council certainly could waive it, but as with anything, if you charge interest on one project and not on the other, there's consequences or unintended consequences of that. The sidewalks deduction, I appreciate the sentiment, but as we discussed earlier, the sidewalks are in a primary factor in the determination of the special benefit. So the easiest way that I can explain is the sidewalks are in the portion that the city's paying, and so to reduce the sidewalk portion, is it going to impact the special benefit amount?
It won't impact the individual resident where the sidewalk is going. It'll impact them by, it'll be in their yard, but it won't impact them financially.
It'll impact the physicality of it not being there and all the other things that go along with that, but it won't impact the special benefit analysis. The same piece relates to the waiving of the connection fees, as I mentioned. The property owner and all the property owners frankly, on the Skyview project were a set, or were charged connection fees at the city's full rate. Certainly, the council's prerogative to...
A Skyview project was a different project than this.
Skyview project happened roughly fifteen years ago, new water and sewer connections, and they were charged connection fees. The city at the time didn't have a met council connection fee. The city had its own wastewater treatment plant, however, the city sewer connection fee was roughly about a thousand dollars more than it is today. So again, that's council prerogative. The question on connection timing, you know, the council has maximum flexibility based on your comfort level with how long you want to provide someone with connections. The ordinance provides ninety days from notice, but the council has the ability to, to take the necessary steps to change that. I defer to Larry on length of time, if it gets beyond a year or two, if there are already ordinance implications or processes that he'd want the council to consider. Brent, on Diedrich? Dan, if I can have you go back to the drainage pattern piece or the sewer connection piece related to that and address that concern? Maybe bring it up on the screen forum.
Yeah, okay. Well, take me a second to get back to, but the question was, is, you know, what, what to expect as far as the sewer? That would be running between the, next to the resident's house. Ultimately, I'm just going to explain it. It's intended to be a drilled line. So does it fit an easement? You know, pipe's only, you know, so wide. So the pipe itself does, but the intent is, is that it'd be, it'd be drilled. And so you would not be an open cut. Obviously, that, that would get into work outside of the, the existing easement. Let's see. It's going to be right up here. So, there you go. So that would be a drilled sanitary sewer line, and so the impacts to the side yards of each of those residents would be, would be virtually unnoticed. The drilling occurs from the street and ends its way all the way at Sixth Street, so ultimately...
But there would be an easement, just in case anything happened underneath, so that we can get to that?
There, there's an easement for the pipe, yes.
Right. I think that was the question.
Yeah.
Then we're up to Joyce on Kirchi. This, they kind of doubled up on the extending time for hookups from two to five years, again, the council discretion. Joyce also had a question related to the rate on that five hundred dollars. So the five hundred dollars was assessed in nineteen ninety-five. I took that amount and inserted into the mini app, or into the Federal Reserve Bank's CPI calculator, five hundred dollars, and what that value is in twenty eighteen, it gave me a number of like eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, so I rounded up to eight twenty-five. If the council wants staff to use a different methodology for contemplating that five hundred dollars, we're certainly open to that and we'll follow the council's direction. Steve Squiers, seventy-eight percent of the costs, that is, would be in keeping with all the other city projects. So when we did the twenty seventeen project, twenty fifteen project, the city's debt service. So when the, the bond is sold for this, the spring set will prepare a debt service schedule and it'll tell us how much we need to levy for our portion, and so that cost will be added to the, the city's debt service schedule. So we have, we're paying for Levi Griffin Roads improvement, the twenty fifteen project, twenty seventeen project, the fire station, that ends in the early part of the next decade, and then just recently, the city hall project. The specific impact by, in fifty thousand dollar increments, we don't have that data. We could probably get some estimates, but frankly, it'll be, we aren't planning to actually borrow the funds through the four twenty-nine process until August of twenty nineteen. By doing so, that'll save us about three hundred thousand dollars in capitalized interest or the debt service fund. We can get into, get into that. I think from my memory, the twenty seventeen project was about a hundred and five thousand dollars. I'd need some time if the council would like to prepare an anticipated debt service impact based on this project, so I'd just need that direction. Then the final piece that I had was what other areas? This is the, really the last neighborhood that's on well and septic in the city. There are about a half a dozen homes on Lonno Lane, which is a private drive, that are on well and septic. So it'd be a different scenario. They don't have city street, they don't have a city street, so that'd be kind of a one-off. But since the city isn't in charge of the road condition in that area, there'd be a whole different set of circumstances, because what's really driving this to Dan's comment is pavement condition. If the pavement was fine, you'd be waiting for the opportunity. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to do it now, but if you don't, in all likelihood, you're waiting another twenty to twenty-five years to make or be in the position to economically determine that decision.
So the answer is that this is the last remaining septic area, other than a private road, which is Lonno?
Correct. And to that point, Mr. Mayor, the, on top of it, the city, after we get through this project, with the exception of mill and overlays, essentially, the entire community has been reconstructed, that needed to be reconstructed. The down, both of the sections of downtown have been done. And then with this section, we really don't have any major street reconstruction projects in our long-term financial plan, which although it presents a tremendous financial burden upfront, we're in a position, unlike a lot of other cities that have reconstruction projects planned out for the next twenty years. So for that, that's kind of a detail to that. On Kaylee, I'd ask Dan to talk up, to address street widening on Kirchi, and then talk about a possible trail connection from Diedrich to Fourth Street along that corridor.
Could you refresh the question on, on Kirchi as far as the streets?
The question was related to why there was a, there's a change in the, from the existing street width to the proposed new street width, and what the basis for that was, why the change?
On Kirchi? Again, I mean, the street widths are going to be determined based on standardization. I'll bring it up here. Let's see.
Could you speak up just a little bit into the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure, from twenty-seven to thirty-two, basically gets to a standard street section that allows parking on both sides of the road. So it'd be, the intent is to bring it to a typical city street standard.
The connection on Fourth, do you have an idea of how long of a connection would be to get from Diedrich to where the trail, where the sidewalk terminates, terminates? I think that's just after St. Nicholas.
Yeah, I think we've approximated it to be somewhere around, you know, four hundred feet, five hundred feet, something to that nature.
And the, the cost of that connection approximately?
We would, we'd put that in, ballparked in the, you know, maybe thirty thousand dollar range, give or take.
And that'd be a hundred percent city cost at this point. Anna, the credit on the septic system, so the initial special benefit analysis had the benefit for Kirchi and Diedrich at a twenty-eight thousand dollar assessment. However, there, the, the folks that did the assessment said that the city could contemplate providing a, a three thousand dollar septic credit. Basically, it's a credit for existing infrastructure. So because this, you know, we're assuming that all the septic tanks are in working order, so that's essentially a credit for the existing septic tank. The reason why a well credit wasn't given is because at this point, we're planning on the council allowing wells to be used for irrigation. The, and that's significant because the, like for example, you know, my family, our average water bill is between sixty and seventy bucks a month. But once we start irrigating, you know, you can get into the nineties or well over a hundred dollars, depending upon how green you want your grass to be. So having the ability to use a well for irrigation and outdoor water purposes will have an impact on someone's monthly water bill. Impact of construction, again from Anna, Dan, can you give an overview of what residents can expect related to the construction schedule?
Yeah, and, and impacts. As I understand, the question is what, what's going to happen during construction? Typically, what, what is a requirement of all these jobs is maintenance of access at all times. Anytime access is not going to be maintained, it's, it's generally going to be noticed to the property owner that you, you can't get into your driveway for, what, four days, five days during concrete pours? But there's going to be direct contact with property owners. There's going to be additional information going out on what to expect. There's going to be times where the streets are difficult to drive down, but certainly access can be maintained. There'll be sometimes dirt, dirt roads. But basically, we are going to be reaching out to the property owners on what to expect, and, you know, that's, it's going to be kind of a day-to-day discussion on what they can plan for, especially when it comes down to concrete, where you actually do have a few moments where you have to park and walk to your house. But most of the time, access can be maintained at all times. But most of the time, access can be maintained at all times, just not on paved streets.
But at no point does anybody have to get a hotel room for three days?
No, no, the, it's, that's not the case. Access is maintained and short-term, we'll, we'll let you know if you can't get into your driveway only.
Thank you.
Then Steve had a question related to assessment of the water main. So, the project as relates to Dietrich at Kirchi isn't assessed by, or is it, the benefit isn't assessed by a, kind of, what's the best way to describe, like, by a per-pipe kind of quantity? It's, the special benefit analysis values the benefit or the, or the expected value increase of the project. And so, that was valued at 25,000. The balance of that will be paid through other resources. So, the water fund will have to kick in for part of that as well. On pavement improvements, it's the same kind of methodology. In that instance, the general tax levy or general property taxes will pay for that. And Steve, the, the assessment amounts are, there's, there is a proposed or preliminary assessment role in the document. So, all the impacted property owners do have access. The range, the, it's a kind of a, the reason why you see a significant difference in the, the property change or the proposed assessment amounts is there's a, a section of this property or a bucket, if you will, that includes alley improvements. And so, that assessment or proposed assessment is $1,200 for the regular street improvements, not including sewer and water. So, for the folks on Sunny Ridge and Elm, their proposed assessment is $8,000. And then for the Dietrich and Kirchi Hill folks, their proposed assessment is 25, or preliminary assessment is $25,000.
So, the numbers differ depending upon where you live and what part of the project touches your property?
Correct. And those, the preliminary assessment role is in the feasibility study that's in the council packet.
That feasibility study and those numbers been made available to the public?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mike had a question related to what's the process for a sidewalk going through a driveway? Who will be responsible and what the process will be?
The project was, it would typically be designed as such that the, the city project will handle the connections to the driveway in full. They would, they would be, you know, maybe up to the right-of-way line or a little bit before it, but the driveway would be constructed with the project as a part of it. Certain times, residents can make requests to have their entire driveway redone, but that's kind of similar to the sewer and water, in which they, they have the discretion to take work past the project limits. But if no request to do anymore is done, all that work is included in the project.
Nathan had a question related to can we provide a justification for the street width on, on Dietrich?
Standardization for two, two sides of parking, roadway standardization.
Uh, then-
Wait, can I interrupt here for a second?
Yeah.
When we did the Third Street project, was that 2017 project or 20, whatever? How wide is that street now, Third Street?
I'd have to defer on that one here.
We'd have to research. I, we can get you that information.
I guess my point is this. While the standard is, I don't know, 32 feet, right?
Yeah, for parking on both sides.
Apparently, you know, in towns where you've had older neighborhoods, like their neighborhood, the streets weren't built that wide then. That's part of their historic kind of nature. And I'm, I'm just wondering if it has to be that wide. You could save some costs by not making them that wide. So, I mean, I think maybe that's something to think about.
Sure, the, the comment can be noted and-
So, I, 'cause I'm pretty sure that, like, Third is less than 32 feet, isn't it?
It's also in the historic district, too.
Yeah, well, the Lenzin addition will shortly be in historic district. I mean, they were built quite a while ago. I mean, I'm just curious if-
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that if the council gave us that direction that we could research and bring back and then have that change made in, in the plans and specifications that the engineer's office would deliver to the council for review.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I just find, I mean, I understand why you need, you know, wide roads when you have a lot of traffic on certain roads. So, but I'm just wondering if this is maybe an instance where maybe it doesn't need to be quite so wide.
Sure.
What's, uh, what's Kirchi Hill by my house? The width of that?
I, I don't have that. I'm sorry, I'd have to get, get you that.
I mean, to narrow down, I, anyway, all right.
Well, and that's my question. I'm going the same place Mike is, is the width, the 32 on Dietrich and Kirchi, is that for consistency for those portions of those roads that's art, that have already been improved?
Yeah, I mean, I would say the significant milestones here that you're looking at is parking on one side or, or both sides. So, certainly in, in most cases, if you can get it set up for parking on both sides, it helps because if people are doing it, it keeps your street functional. When you go down to parking on one side, you really have to try and enforce that. And so, there is some challenges when you get down to one side that people don't park on both sides, in which case you really don't have the, the width necessary to, to, you know, get, get people going both directions on it. So, ultimately, we've even made some concessions on, on width in those areas where it's already very, very narrow. And so, it's a bit of a balancing act and all, all these comments can be taken into account.
Cindy Monroe, can I ask you to clarify? Were you talking about Dietrich, Kirchi, and Sunny Ridge, all of those?
Well, I'm looking at Dietrich Drive right now.
Sure.
I can't remember, somebody said that there's hardly ever any parking on both sides. So, I mean, why couldn't it, you know, e- either narrow the road a little bit and only have parking on one side? I mean-
But if you go up by where Courtney and I live, there's parking on both sides all the time. So, if they, I mean, it's like saying that nobody walks through their, their neighborhood. Why would you? There's no sidewalks.
Well, the sidewalk- I don't know, I've walked through those neighborhoods, I just walk in the streets.
Well, the street width we have right now-
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be causing problems. I don't know, Dan-
Well, I'm, I'm curious, like, what is the street width on the newer parts of those two roads? Are they 32? What are they? Wait, so we were gonna-
That's not, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, I, wait, 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 you guys-
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we gotta, we gotta do this.
I, I just have a question. I mean, we're not making these roads wider than the existing newer portions of those roads, are we?
No.
No, no, that, 32 is not considered to be a wide street, but, you know, we certainly can take these-
No, not wide, I mean-
No, it's not wider than my street.
So, what we, what we need to do is go to the city record drawings-
Yep.
Get those and then report back and then get the direction.
Let's argue facts.
Ron had a question related to paying taxes and why, why does that not account? And it's kind of, it's an interesting transition. So, one of the pieces that, or the, after this topic, we're going into truth and taxation. And so, one of the slides that we have is related to that is, and it's, and I acknowledge that it's probably hard to, to think about, but the city is really two separate businesses. It has the business of, kind of, your daily operations, which is, you know, parks, fire, police, planning, elections, snow plowing, fleet maintenance, building maintenance, et cetera. And that is paid through by property taxes, permits, fees, et cetera. So, that's one business. The second business the city has is the enterprise funds or the utilities. So, that's water and sewer and storm sewer. And though, the revenues for those, that business, it comes from monthly charges for peop, for usage, which is what people get on their monthly utility bill and then connection fees, which we're talking about tonight. And so, kind of what, something that kind of helps explain that is actually, you know, city employee salaries and equipment. A portion of, depending upon that position, a portion of that salary or equipment or uniforms is charged against the utilities fund because the property taxes shouldn't have to pay for the water and sewer service. So, they're segregated. So, that's why someone paying their property taxes for a certain amount of time doesn't provide, necessarily provide a credit because property taxes aren't a revenue source for the water and sewer. There's, there's zero property tax dollars that go toward the operation of the city's water and sanitary sewer system. And I think, believe Dan addressed the driveway reconstruction process earlier. Pete, related to Elm, the determining factor for Elm as it relates to costs, I don't have a cost breakdown from Dan. I might be able to address if there's certain alternatives that are more expensive than others. I can tell you from-
Is the trail the cheapest?
One would think so, if you're not building a road.
Yeah, I can tell you from this, from my perspective, the one-way was a street section with curb and gutter on both sides. And so, now the current piece is a eight, you know, eight-foot-wide trail that's not, doesn't need to handle that type of, same kind of traffic and it doesn't have curb and gutter. But I'll defer to Dan on any additional details.
So, yes. I would say yes. Yeah, the trail's gonna be cheaper.
Uh, will homeowners of Elm have a, um-
A say?
Have a say. So, frankly, the, the big impetus for making that change is we received a significant amount of feedback from not only the residents on Old Elm, but the residents on what I'll call New Elm, which ends in a cul-de-sac. And so, that was the basis for developing that fourth alternative. But, you know, I, selfishly, you know, as a part of the staff, I, you know, appreciate additional comments from folks on Elm to see what they'd prefer. Then Lee had a question for, do we have anything related to sump pump connections in the plans?
No, not, not to my knowledge.
I think Lee asked, did you ever have anything in the plans?
I know that's a, I know that's a practice that some communities do. They have a direct connect from sump pumps into the storm sewer, but this project doesn't have that. So, so that's what I have. So, I'd invite any residents that have follow-ups or had questions that they don't feel like were answered, if they'd come up and address the council and we can start taking notes again.
Yeah, so we had a number of questions that were listed out. Brent and Dan went through and tried to address as many of those as possible. Hopefully, Eric, I still wanna make sure that you get your question answered. I didn't, we were kind of jokingly going through and I didn't get back to you, Eric Rudolph. And so, I wanna make sure that everybody, either if they wanna have a follow-up question or understanding of where the answers were, I wanna make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak or ask those questions. Come on up.
I just wanna, my second question was with all the streets, part of it, or the city base? If we can do our own part of that by taking the driveway off that has to be removed for the project and put it back in, the city would pay you to do that? Because you gotta pay someone on that project?
I'm gonna-
I work on all the projects and I have to lead it, do that?
I've never heard the city doing that, but I, have you ever heard of it? Well, I'm saying that's all I have the experience with, but I've never heard of that at all.
The city has always done the improvements within the right-of-way, which that's the section of the driveway.
Right.
The practicality of it, I, you'd be segregating, I guess I'd have to defer to Larry Harris or-
Or you manage that.
Or Dan on the complexities of having somebody work within your right-of-way, et cetera.
Really complex.
What did you say?
Really complex. Really complex. Not impossible, but there are some significant complexities to doing it.
So, I feel like I'm having a little bit of deja vu related to the standardization of streets, 'cause several years ago, I talked about parking issues on Carver Creek Circle and the width of our circles. I just wanna bring up that there's several streets within the city that don't meet the standardization. And I think it's absolutely ludicrous to say that we're going to standardize and pay the money as a city for those, for the, for the widening of the streets. I don't wanna pay for it as a taxpayer. I wanna make that clear. That I think the city needs to be very careful where they're gonna spend and invest money. I also think that, just from a standpoint of related to the rest, the 78% of the taxpayers are footing the bill for these improvements. It doesn't sound to me, based on the conversation we've had today, that many of the residents of Kirchi Hill and other areas want these improvements. So, I think it's great you're tearing up the streets and a good time to do it, but personally, I don't, if they don't want it, I don't want it. That's my comment.
Thank you. Come on up, Christian. Nice, what's, hey, you know, have a seat, have a seat. Christian Anderson.
How you doing today?
I'm bad, how are you?
Christian Anderson from 1020 Sunny Ridge Drive. My wife just spoke, first one that spoke. I just wanted to bring up that I've lived here for 18 years now. It's, it seems like a long time now. And we built our house on Sunny Ridge and specifically bought it 'cause it was a quiet, narrow street with no lights. As you know, Mike, I don't like-
Light pollution? What's that?
And I'm an engineer, so I also understand what the city engineer has to deal with. It's functional versus aesthetics. But don't forget about the aesthetics because there's people on my street right now that bought a house specifically because it was a narrow street. And they said that. So, we, we can make these choices between aesthetics and functionality and sometimes we have to balance that, right? Okay? That's all I have.
Thanks, Christian.
Thanks, Christian.
18 years? He was on the planning commission.
Hi, I'm Jake, 707 Kirchi Hill Drive. I know we had talked earlier about the connection fee and more than likely not being able to waive that. Don't wanna set a precedent, but based on the conversation, it sounds like this is the last area in the city that needs to be met up with the rest. So, I feel like we're not necessarily running the risk of setting a precedent. If we can potentially get that waived, I think that would help a lot with cost of the project. It's significant to a lot of people on my street, like Sharon had brought up many points and I appreciate that.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but what I'll tell you is I've been on this council for 20 years. And we've done probably five or six of these projects and we've never waived it. And the issue then boils down to how do I look skip low in the face and all the people that we've actually made connect to our system and then say, well, this is the last one, we shouldn't, these guys don't have to pay. That's where the, that's where it's, it's backward, not forward. Excuse me, if that makes sense. Sharon?
Yep, so I just got one last thing to say of that comment that you just made. Did past projects have a total bill of $43,045 per house? 'Cause that's what mine would cost when you add the $34,745 plus where my septic tank is located at my house, underneath the concrete patio in the backyard. Appraisals that I've already got to actually do the hookup from my house to the street is $8,300 because they'd have to tear up the, the cement patio and back. And so, you know, th- this is a different circumstance because I have talked to a couple of people on Skyview Lane and one, they said when they had theirs done, they're in between $15,000 and $20,000 is the total cost. And we're, we're double the, we're double the price. So, anything like those, the connection fees of, the, the city sewer and water connection fees of $834 and $6,426 for a total of $7,260? If you guys could waive that, that would be a huge, huge help. And a question regarding that, you know, is that an ordinance that we have to connect? Is the connection fees an ordinance?
Yes.
So, if it's an ordinance, that's, that's you, the council, you guys are the ones who create the ordinance, amend it or change it or even discard them? So, it's really up to you guys if you'd like to help us out on that?
Got it. Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Buffalo Sabers?
You got it. Live it and love it. Rich Dresmala, 116 Elm Drive. I just heard you guys discuss and say that the, the trail connection was the least expensive option. Unfortunately, that's the one that would impact me. That cul-de-sac would probably be about 14 feet away from my living room. So, I really oppose that one. And then the Hammerhead, that was- um, that was a newer one that had not been disclosed to us until we recently seen it last evening, um, and that is the one that would be favored, in my opinion.
That would be what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That would be the one that would be favored, in my opinion.
Okay. That's your choice?
Yes.
Hammerhead?
Now, there was a concern with, in regards to all the other, uh, proposals, depending on which option they actually go with, where is the snow removal going to take place on these cul-de-sacs? Cause we do have houses down, you know, one of the neighbors has a house that's further down in the, the end of the road.
I would assume that that's something that we would plan for once we've made the decision. Is that accurate, Mr. Skolk?
Yeah, that's correct. On a cul-de-sac this small, we'd probably stage it off to one side or the other, and then haul it out.
Yep. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And can I clarify, the cul-de-sac, uh, here is, is dramatically different than the, the one that's in the revised alternative. This is, this is very, very small versus a true cul-de-sac.
This isn't the same, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to talk over, but I want to make sure that we, everybody can hear is that this cul-de-sac with this connection is not the same cul-de-sac as the previous one?
Yes.
So, it won't be fourteen feet from his living room?
No.
Fourteen and a half to, do we know how...
We know.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's important what the, uh, so how much smaller is that cul-de-sac than the previous cul-de-sac?
Well, the, the, the previous cul-de-sac would have been a full size, you know, closer to, you know, uh...
Is this ten feet farther?
Uh, this is within the right-of-way is the best way to describe it. Does it...
Do you know where the right-of-way is on your property?
I do not.
Okay. So, I'm gonna guess that it's where your property line is, it's about six feet.
Okay. Cause it, just from the aerial view of this proposed versus the other one that we have a drawing of, this appears to be a lot closer to the, the corner of the house.
That one looks huge.
That one looks huge, and it...
And just, can you go back to the other one, Dan?
Yep.
Does that one look considerably smaller for the purposes? This is within our right-of-way,
so it wouldn't be imposing on your land at all?
Um, I would disagree. I could be incorrect with that, but...
Dan, can you go back to that previous slide? So, the, is it fair to say that the yellow line on what I'll call the bottom half of the cul-de-sac, that's the edge of the cul-de-sac in the new drawing, so that's as close as the bulb would get to Rich's home?
Uh, yeah, I, and I think what, I think what we really should, I, I key in on is, is this is, this is really just a concept at this point. We can shrink this even from here.
So, at this stage, just hypothetically speaking, we decide to go with the trail, that part of the cul-de-sac we can work with this property owner on?
Yes, that's accurate.
And stay within our right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
We want to make sure that we know exactly which house you're talking about on this photo.
So, I believe, Rich, you're right where the I is and trail connection, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you flip back one more time? Flip to the next one one more. Thank you.
Even though you have that shirt on, thanks, Rich.
Alright, thank you.
Come on up.
My name's Jess. Um, we've been in cover for four years, recently sold a property, and in the midst of purchasing one. Um, my question is, how does this compare to other, the cost of this compared to other hookups that have been done within the city? When we're looking at forty to forty-five thousand dollars, over a twenty-year span with the interest, you're looking at two-hundred-some dollars a month. Forty to forty-five thousand dollars, that's my son's college education is the way I look at that. Just something to ponder. Um, and a number was thrown out that the other ones were closer to fifteen to twenty thousand. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. I don't have...
That's whether that's true or not, yeah.
Right. I don't have that information.
Got it.
To make that informed decision.
Sure.
But I'd like to know how they compare, because when you break down forty to forty-five thousand dollars over a twenty-year span, that's a lot of money for young people, as well as people who are looking to retire.
Agreed.
So, just keeping that in mind when projects like this are taking place, because I, we do un, I do understand that we have to move forward, um, with community improvement. Um, so that's my biggest question, is how is it compared to others that have hooked up?
Got it. And we'll have all that information, I can assure you of that. Well, I don't have it right now.
This is a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, we can, and council, we can, I don't have that information now, but we can certainly pull minutes and project files and, and provide that information.
You bet. Within the next day? Day or two?
We'll have to go through our archives, so it'll probably take...
Couple days?
Yeah, early next week, we can have...
Early next week, yeah.
We can put it on the city's website, on the project page.
Come on up.
Sue Meyer, four three six Dietrich Drive. I guess I'm kinda curious about the street width, because I know my neighbors next door to me, and then down like three or four, their street isn't any wider than my street across from Lee, so I'd like you to check that, and maybe not widen us, keep us at the twenty-seven. If you go up and actually walk it again and look, it's not any wider. And so, if you widen us, are you then therefore going to widen the rest of them to the circle, so everything is uniform, or are you gonna be wide and then all of a sudden go narrow to finish the road? If you look at the map, I can kinda point at what I'm talking about.
Okay.
See where your yellow line stops on Dietrich? And then, and then you've got three houses before you get to a turn. All of those are the exact, exact same width as ours right now. So, you're gonna have to widen the whole street down into a little bit of a cul-de-sac there for it to all be uniform. So, you're actually, will be adding to the expense of everybody in the town. So, I'd say...
So, I...
Reevaluate that and see if you can keep it at the twenty-seven. Thank you.
I think Sue hit the nail on the head, is we, what we need as a staff to do is evaluate what the street width conditions are existing, and then we'll provide a report, uh, back to the council.
I think, I think, I think standardizing needs to equal what, uh, Novak Fleck did in nineteen ninety-four in terms of what the width of those two streets are, and think that's your standardization. I think they're twenty-nine, but I, I mean, I don't know. Um, I, I, quite frankly, I don't care if they're thirty-two or twelve, as long as they're standard. I mean, I don't see there's any reason to have an extension of Kerchi Hill or Dietrich that doesn't match the other two that are considered new, so. I mean, if they're twelve feet, I, I know they're not.
Well, as a, this is a process-related comment and guidance to everyone in, in the room. So, tonight the council's being asked two fundamental questions. One, you want to accept the feasibility study, i.e. is the project feasible? And so, you, you have in your packet a, a resolution, say, you know, accepting the feasibility study. And then the second is, you want to authorize the engineer to prepare plans and specifications for the project?
Which would spell out.
And so...
Sorry.
It's okay.
I interrupted you.
So, wha, what we can do if the, if, if the council wants to move forward with the project, is some of these pieces related to street width evaluation and, um, questions related to length of time, we can dig further in and provide more information related to the Skyview assessment. All the while, um, the engineer's office is preparing plans and specs if you want to proceed.
Right.
The reason I bring that up is, there's folks in the room or residents who have come tonight to spend their time sharing their feedback.
Right.
They might not get all the answers. I don't want the council, should you decide to move forward, have those folks feel like those questions haven't been resolved.
Correct.
Though, frankly, the council only needs to determine that, or we want to have it well ahead of time for you, but really, when the assessment hearing, um, should you decide to move forward occurs, when the assessment hearing is planned for October of twenty nineteen, that's when the council really has to be definite about term, uh, you know, um, all these specifics about connection fees, et cetera, the process. If someone wants to, uh, assess their connection fees and their private connection, what those amounts are, length of time, um, those will all be significant. Tonight are those two fundamental questions. Is the project feasible, and do you want to authorize engineer to prepare plans and specifications?
So, to piggyback on that, is the project feasible? It's pretty self-explanatory. For projects, um, for the, uh, preparation of plans and specs, um, do you, I think we need to specify what those plans and specs are in terms of sidewalks. I think the width of the street is gonna be, I think we've talked about that, and you guys can all correct me if I'm wrong, but the width of Dietrich, the width of Kerchi, um, the type of connection between Elm Drive and the, um, do we want that to be a hammerhead? Do we want that to be a cul-de-sac? Those things need to be specified, so he can actually put together...
Correct. It'd be helpful to have direction on the Kerchi Hill sidewalk, the, um, the end of Elm, or the kind of that configuration and street width. Um, but you don't have to get down to the final piece, cause the next step is, is a part of this process, once the engineer's office has prepared plans and specifications, the council has to approve.
Right.
So, I would suggest, based on the feedback tonight, that once we get that, and we have, we prepare some type of, uh, akin to what we sent out previously, or some type of resident summary to folks in the project area and say, this is what the plans and specifications look like, and then we invite folks, if you decide to proceed tonight, to provide further comment. We could also set up some open houses and do some mailings to make sure that we're getting that feedback. Um, but again, yes, council direction would be, uh, critical for Dan and his team to move forward.
Got it. Alright. So, um, we need to close the public hearing before we take any action, so I'm gonna put it out, uh, to the public, uh, certainly one more time. Think about it. Does anybody have any other questions or comments that they'd like to, uh, process before we close the public hearing and discuss amongst ourselves? Come on up, come on up. Eric, you have a question. I'm not letting you off the hook.
Teresa Thede, four oh five Dietrich. When this is all happening, what access do we have to get in and out of the neighborhood?
You, the road won't be completely blocked up, no.
It won't, okay. Are you gonna do one first and then the other, or all of it together, or...
Not, not sure. But you'll be able to get to your home. As Dan mentioned earlier, there might be a point when there's concrete that's being formed that you may need to park on the street for a day, um, but you'll always have access to and from your home.
Okay.
And if you don't have access to go across concrete, you will be notified.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
You guys can all come over and stay at my house. I'll be, I'll be gone.
Park on the street?
Yeah.
On both sides?
Hello, council?
Hello.
Grant Fetter, seven twelve Kerch Hill. Thanks again for having us tonight. Um, so I just kinda want to recap. I know there's been a lot of comments tonight, but basically just wanted to drive home the comments that have been made from the folks that live on Kerch, as far as taking a look at all the different options that have been presented to us. Um, again, when we had the first initial discussion on the sidewalk, um, literally talking about sidewalk options, the unanimous kind of decision for the, our street was that wasn't necessary, so we want to, again, just take that to your notes. Um, I did notice with your, you're talking about the bonds, uh, the four twenty-nines, there was an assessment rate of three, three point five percent, and then that would actually be applied to the residents at a four point five percent? I think I might have misinterpreted that, but...
I, I think you misinterpreted that. We used four point five, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, we used four point five as the average, assuming that it'll come in at three point five.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
You kinda lost me. The city's standard practice is whatever the city can borrow at, they do, uh, one point higher than...
Right. That's exactly what I just said.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a passer, so if it's three point, three point five for the city, then it is four point five to the residents?
Correct. We just assume it's gonna be one point, so that it's a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
Correct?
No.
Yes. If that, if that, uh, whenever, if you could provide more, you know, uh, explanation of what that would actually come to when that is decided upon, like if that's already just, you know, a final... No, so the city will, so the city's process for, um, getting bond funds is we go out for bid, and so it's, uh, Spring Center Financial Advisors creates a specification for that, and then we get bids from banks for those bonds, and so if, you know, if it's a great bond market, we get it at three percent or two percent, that'd be one point or a hundred basis points higher. If it's at five percent, that'd go to, for the assessment rate, it'd be at six. So, it is market-dependent? Correct. And that's August of nineteen? Correct. Okay. Um, okay, thank you. And then, again, just kinda coming back to the street width, you know, living on Kerchi, it's, you know, the, the traffic's not there to justify a wider street. Um, again, if we're gonna be losing two and a half feet on each side for a thirty-two-foot proposed plus sidewalk, I, I think you guys should just, uh, please look at that again and, and take up all the comments that have been made tonight.
Are you comfortable as a spokesperson for Kerchi Hill?
No.
No, 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 hold on.
Not me.
I was trying to totally put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Um, Kerchi Hill, where, um, Courtney lives, on the corner, which is the new part. Where I live is on the corner.
Yep.
Are you comfortable extending however wide Kerchi is there, down past where the older part is? If it's narrower, it's narrower. If it's wider, it's wider. Are you comfortable with standardizing Kerchi Hill as one long road?
Well, if we're gonna assume it's twenty-seven feet, do we, you know, whatever the, I think we're, I would, I'm not gonna speak for the street.
Sure.
I'm just speaking for myself.
Well, you're saying, don't widen the street. I'm, I'm just saying, are you comfortable with standardizing it?
To keep it where it's at right now?
No, no, no. To keep it so it matches this, the newer part of Kerchi Hill.
What is that increasing by?
I, I don't know. That's my point, is I don't, I was telling these guys, I don't care if it's sixty-two or twelve.
Right.
I just want it to be the same.
Right. I guess, you know, if you're talking about widening it for, uh, traffic or for parking, I mean, drive down that street any time of the day, they're very, very minimal.
You know, it does, I was gonna let that go, but actually, in the morning, it's pretty busy, and so is it in the afternoon. When I go to work at seven o'clock, I run into people all, I don't run into people all the time, but, um, so there's, there's...
That's good.
I, I, so truly, I, in terms of what I'm asking for and what I want.
Yep.
I want it to be standardized. So, where Dietrich hits the new part of Dietrich, and where Kerchi hits the new part of Kerch, and I say new, it was nineteen ninety-four, um, I just want those to be standard in the same width. I don't care what they are. You're cool with that, Lee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. Well, and hey, he's talking now.
No, I mean, that's...
Uh...
It's a group decision, so...
Got it.
But that, that makes sense then, to keep it uniform.
Alright, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Alan, did you get your questions answered? I want to give you the opportunity for the microphone. Yeah, sorry, guys. Just kidding, Al.
Again, I'm Alan Obzinski, ten twenty-three Sunny Ridge Drive. Um, we had one more concern, and that's, that's the, you know, nobody parks on Sunny Ridge Drive. Um, there's no reason to have signs or even regulate parking on one side of the road. Um, I understand that you could probably make the argument, well, if there was an emergency vehicle had to come through and there were...
So, if you have a party, Alan, are you gonna not have anybody park on the street?
Um, would, everybody has enough room.
Let's talk to your neighbors and say, hey, we're gonna park in their driveway.
We're all old people.
Okay, alright. You're not gonna be old for long.
For now.
Actually, you will be old, cause no young people are gonna buy there.
Exactly.
Ah, got it, yeah.
Alright.
So, anyway, that's, that's the one last thing I wanted to say, is it, it really doesn't seem like there needs to be a, a ban on parking on either side. Um, you know, but again, it's not up to me, of course, so.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Alright. Going once. Eric!
Rudolph.
Dude, you got something.
Yeah, just to make sure that everybody else is down. My, um, small piece of bike down, down there, nothing.
Does anyone have anything else before Eric Rudolph? Come on up, Lori.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Sayer, and I reside at one thousand five Sunny Ridge Drive. On behalf of probably over seventy percent of the residents on Sunny Ridge Drive...
Seventy?
Seventy percent. Um, whose feedback I've got is just the name of the street, Sunny Ridge Drive, implies not a major road, it's just kind of our little country road to our neighborhood. Um, we do see the need...
Drive, that's what drive means?
Yes. Like, usually you can't...
Monroe Drive was gonna be a collector?
Just a sunny, just a quiet little drive-through.
It's more of a collector. Typically, there, there's a cul-de-sac at one end. Ours does not have that. Um, we definitely see a need for the road improvement. We definitely see a need for the road improvement. We do not see a need to widen the road. We see a need for the gutter, curb and gutter, to help with our drainage issues. We do, we thank you for taking our feedback about not recommending a sidewalk. And then the last comment is there's been strong feedback to not have the non-parking signs. And I was thinking about if Al had a party, and if he invited me, he has a very wide driveway, and just kind of-
And you walk.
Uh, yeah. Um, it was implied a little earlier, too, a lot of these homes are much older, and the setbacks at the time that the homes were built or moved in, there's two homes in the neighborhood that were moved in, it was just different setups or, you know, rules for, for what was needed for at that time, the narrow road, that we would like to say, we would like to see stay that size. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Eric? Anyone else? Eric? Anybody before Eric? Eric? Eric, you're on.
121 Fourth Street East Downtown, four houses up from Casey's on the left, for those who are doing math.
Purple. Beautiful, beautiful apple trees. So this isn't nothing major again. I feel bad even coming up after sitting, you know, through what some of these people have discussed, because this is a very small part of the project, but I just want to throw a suggestion out there. So the piece of the project we're talking about is the alley behind my house, right? So the alley between my house and your house. And that alley, you know, over the, it's a unique alley, right? There are a lot of alleys downtown, but this is the one that connects downtown from getting that- Some people get out without seeing the cops. From getting the H out of downtown, right? So it's a little bit of a runway already, right? You know, it's not all that improved, but it's, it's the alley that people take, like you said, you know, when they park downtown, they have a few too many, they want to sneak out of town. And after, you know, 15 years of living there, I've seen it enough times, don't tell me it doesn't happen, you know, it's, it's there. It's the pizza delivery guy shortcut, where he doesn't want to stop at, you know, the four-way downtown, right? And then the big one is the delivery guys, right? The guys that feed the liquor store, the guys that feed, whatever the heck that bar's called at the end of the road, legit 18-wheelers. Like, we're not talking about, you know, I'm just saying, oh, there's really 14, 18-wheelers, big trucks, couple times a week, you know, come down Oak, and then they spend 20 minutes going five inches up and five inches back and five inches up and five, and then going down that alley so they can park in the alley and not have to walk an extra 10 feet, right, to deliver eight cases of beer or whatever it is they're doing. If I had a dollar for every time they hit Andy's garage, or my garage, or that powerpole sitting there, or ran over a retaining wall, or, you know, I have like 70 bucks. I mean, I, we eventually start, you know, videotaping, and it's bad. And with the minute I saw that you guys were going to improve the alley, I thought, this might be an opportunity to fix some of that, right? It's, so I don't know if this is possible, but I just wanted to suggest that maybe on my end of this alley, so where Mary and Andy live and I live, right, so the Casey's- East side, yep. Both of our driveways dump into the street, not the alley. We don't use the alley at all. We don't need the alley, I certainly don't, to access my property. I don't need it for contractors to access my property. My garage connects to the street, maybe considering dead- How far is your garage from the end of the alley, the edge of the alley? Two feet? Maybe less. Yeah. I mean, well, well, from the drivable alley, right? Right, right. Because the alley is- I'm not saying where the trucks hit. Because the alley is as wide as a semi-plus, maybe four feet on either side, you know, it's a pretty big alley. Possibly considering dead-ending that alley on our end, because we don't use it. And that way, when you do improve it and pave it, it doesn't look like a runway to people because if you improve that alley, which I'm fine with, it's going to get used more and not less. And it's already, like I said, that, this isn't some, you know, quiet little alley that just the people who live there use to get their cars in and out of their garages. This is a different piece of alley. This is a really busy alley. People drive fast. Doesn't really need, you don't have to answer this today. I just want to throw it out there as a consideration, dead-end it on my end. You know, throw eight inches of topsoil between my garage and Andy's garage, throw on some grass seed, throw a curb at the end, done. I'm not sure we can do that based upon emergency vehicle issues, but that's just my first thought. But the alley across on the front of our side only has one way in and one way out?
Since we're on the same alley, could, is there something we could do to even signage that, you know, truck traffic can't go through there?
Weight restrictions? Yeah. Now, again, not a terrible idea, but my- But not great. Our yard seems to be the attraction for, we have three power posts on either side of our garage, three. So we-
Power poles.
The power poles, right? The power poles, the supports, all, we have three within about 20 feet, two on one side of our driveway and one on the other. It's like a goal post. I don't know that I want any additional signage there. I, I, I mean, no different than these people, that, we're, because we're at the corner of Fourth and Oak, and because it's busy, and because 10 years ago, we went through the same thing all these people did, we got all of it. We got all the posts, we got all the power lines. We're already the hub for every wire that's run downtown. Just drive by and look up, it's there. So I'd love for you to dead-end it. If you can't, how about this? Measure the width of a normal Chevy truck, give it one foot on either side, curb it.
We have a Chevy truck, can we get more than one foot?
Whatever. So, so-
I'm just joking with you, but I get what you're saying.
So let's, 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 let's bring this back.
But it's a 12 from 15, so it's coming down.
So I totally understand where you're coming from. And this is the first I've heard of that. So in fairness, I would like to take an opportunity to talk with our city engineer based upon the plans and specs of how we move forward. So there's a number of things up in air. We have to figure out what the width of Kirchi and Dietrich, Sunny Ridge, all of those things.
Yeah, that stuff's a bit more important.
No, 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 I disagree with you. It's, it's, they're equal. But I also don't have the answer for you, but I also don't want to delay this project. I would like to have the plans and specs move forward with the idea that we take a look at this particular aspect of it and say, let's come up with a different alternative than where we're at right now. Is that fair? Is that fair to you? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, right, tonight, I don't want answers, I just want to throw out some ideas. The two houses on that end of that block don't use the alley. Our garage, you know, somebody had the foresight way back in the day, I think ours was 1910, to move our garage up so it enters into the street and not the alley. You know, we got lucky. So did Andy and Mary. Everybody else needs it, I get that, you know, but it's a runway, it's an escape, it's an escape route, it's an 18-wheeler trucking route. I've taken it. Fix it, yeah. Narrow it up, do something. Not really fast, though.
Can I ask you a question? If, because we are bringing it down from 15 feet to 12 feet, what is the width of, I mean, what is a truck width? I don't have any idea.
Maybe a bigger question, is it legal for an 18-wheeler to use the alley to unload beer at a bar?
Right. And I find it annoying, too, when I come home and I can't get down the alley, but then, and the flip side, you don't prefer signs either, so.
So let's, do you mind if we, like, we're not going to come up with any answer tonight? Consider something that- Maybe even a bollard that won't allow an 18-footer to go through, whatever. I, I don't even want to get into it right now. But are you comfortable with the fact that we'll take a look at it? We'll consult with you, because obviously, there's only one person that's brought it forward, and we'll talk with you about it. Yeah, whatever works. I just, if you pave it, it's going to get used more, let's figure out a way to control. This is an opportunity, right? Oh. Outstanding. Outstanding. I'm not even a salesperson. No, you're good at it, though. All right, that's all I have. Appreciate it. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
You guys take note of that, okay. So I'm going to open it up one more time, certainly not to speak now or forever hold your peace, but for purposes of this meeting, I'm going to put it out one more time, and then we're going to make a motion to close the public hearing and talk amongst council. Anyone? All right. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Henry, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Uh, there's a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are to the discussion point. Anyone want to lead off?
Um, I'll start with a couple of things. First of all, there seems to be a lot of discussion about sidewalks that many residents do not feel are necessary and feel will reduce the size of their yards, and so I'm just curious, do we really need these sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we do not.
I 100% think that we do. And, and let me just explain why. We've talked about Sunny Ridge, and I understand why there. We've talked about Dietrich, which I don't agree with, but I can live with. We have a sidewalk going down past Courtney's house that dead-ends that has consistently been planned to be there. We also have a downtown that is very difficult to get to by pedestrians. If we add that, we also talk a lot about in our comprehensive plan, in our parks plan, about having a connectivity between neighborhoods. I think you're going to do two things if you don't, stay consistent with sidewalks in this particular area. Number one, it's going to be very difficult to get to downtown, and new residents are in this area are going to have a difficult time getting to downtown, more difficult than if they put in sidewalks. Secondly, if you're in my neighborhood, you can't get to Fourth Street without walking on a road, unless you go all the way down to the park, walk through the park, walk all the way down, and then you empty out into a street. You don't empty out actually into, onto a sidewalk or a trail, so.
What do you mean, in your neighborhood? You have a sidewalk in front of your house, no?
I do, but it's, but it dead-ends in front of Courtney's house.
And there isn't one on High Street.
There isn't one on High Street. So in order for me to not walk in a street with my children, I don't have kids, but you can't, you can have a three-year-old in a stroller walking down the middle of the street. Courtney's nephew the other day was shoveling the street because there wasn't a sidewalk, so I, I think, I, I think it's-
I mean, I think on busy streets, I understand why we need sidewalks. On less busy streets, I really don't understand it, but.
Cindy, could I comment on, on what you had to say? A number of years ago, we looked at continuing the community park trail, because that corner on High Street and Fourth Street is actually owned by the city, it's city property there. And we did not, as staff and council at the time, did not move forward with that because we did not want to dump pedestrian traffic into an uncontrolled intersection, which was the original proposal on here. I can't remember which color it is now, if it's the blue or the red. I believe it's the red. So if we were to carry the one down Kirchi and then right out Dietrich, that would, that would dump right into Fourth Street, which is something that was deemed a number of years earlier, that that is not ideal for foot traffic. Then, with the new proposal now where it goes down and meets Fourth Street, I also don't find that it's very equitable to say these other couple of houses here just get lumped in. And I know that Brent is saying, well, generally, the sidewalk cost is going to be, you know, rolled into the 78 percent, that adds an additional 40 grand, if I remember your estimate, estimation, that that adds to the project by connecting down to the one in front of Lisa Lorraine's house.
Was that a project cost, or was that a direct city cost for the sidewalk?
It's a direct city cost.
Which gets spread out because the city money comes from the residents. So I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of that either, because now we're adding additional costs to the 78 percent of the residents who are putting in. I also, for those who live on Kirchi, if you have seen me, I'm sorry, casing your neighborhood and driving through there very slowly, I've been looking at your front yards. And when we look at, now we have talked about possibly keeping that road a little bit more narrow, but you're still talking about that boulevard, then the sidewalk, and that is getting really close to people's homes. They just weren't built that way in the years that they were built. They, they were not set up for that. And, I mean, you are, when I was driving through there my last time today, I was, I was putting these, you know, feet through, and, and the trees are coming out, and it's really close. I am not in favor of the sidewalks in this project.
Didn't we do a feasibility and a walkability study and-
I think Christie, I think, I think Christie was in charge of that.
To keep, to keep the city connecting from parks to trails, to downtown, to main corridors throughout the whole town.
Right. But I don't think that meant that every street in town should have sidewalks.
Didn't say every street.
I don't think that's what we're proposing.
The main one that we're talking about right now is on Kirchi, correct?
Yep. And Dietrich.
Dietrich and, and the part of-
Total connectivity.
Okay. I believe that there should be a sidewalk there. There's more people that use the trails than you believe. They walk everywhere. And I've walked from Kirchi, down Kirchi, past jars, downtown, and I go from sidewalk to street, back to sidewalk.
We're, we're not, we're not, we're not taking public comment at this point.
But, but thanks, but thanks, Teresa.
Which, to answer your comment, then you have to cross the street, but I, we understand. Don't do that again.
But in order to keep things consistent, I, it's not that-
Standardized, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I understand, I understand the, the north side on Dietrich. Okay. I understand it. I understand Sunny Ridge. But Kirchi is kind of a main thoroughfare going through. And people walk the trails. They absolutely do. And there is no way to get through there on a sidewalk from, from Kirchi over to, to Fourth anywhere.
That's the only one that-
Just walk in the street.
That's, yeah, but, I mean, you, do you want to have a three-year-old?
But still, let's have some type of consistency with, with some of the parks and the trails, so the trail system's through.
I think that our Parks Commission has voted unanimously to have connect, connectivity throughout the city. I think that it's, I mean, this isn't a massive part of the compensation or the cost of this project. And, and while Sunny Ridge is a different animal, and you can make the argument, and I guess with Dietrich as well, people say that we don't walk through Dietrich, well, people say that we don't walk through Dietrich. Well, I don't walk through Dietrich. I used to run through Dietrich, but there's no sidewalks. And I, it, it, it just, you go elsewhere. I think if we're staying true to what we're trying to do as a council, what we've talked about for a long, long time in terms of trails and connectivity, one of the big things that we've talked about is between the bluffs and connectivity to downtown. Downtown's gonna disappear if you don't make it easy to get to, other than city hall. So I, 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 I can't vote for this without sidewalks on Kersey Hill.
Well, can I just, I'm sorry, uh, just to, fine, if, if sidewalks have to be in there, then how about a narrower street? So that we're not taking up-
As long as it's the same width as what we currently have. I don't, I mean, it's-
As long as it's the same width as what they currently have?
No, 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 no. Is, as long as it's the same width, this is Dietrich, this is the new proposed part. The previous part of Dietrich, I don't wanna widen or narrow it anymore than what we, that is the same width is there and the same width is there.
But if we do this, we have not included sidewalks on Dietrich, on High Street. Now granted, High Street's not necessarily part of this project, but there isn't a sidewalk there. We have the stub that comes out coming down Kersey, so take it up or curb cut it into the street. Um, because you can't, you can't go to the other streets, Dietrich and High, on a sidewalk either. They're not there. So why, I don't understand why to put this in someone's like front doorstep is how close this is going to get.
That's, well, I appreciate that. It's, uh, it's not, that's not quite true.
May I?
Yeah, please do.
Um, so just from my experience, my home is the one on the corner of Kersey and High Street where there is the existing sidewalk and the sidewalk to nowhere. If we don't have that shoveled in the winter right away, there are footprints in there. That is a very, for going absolutely nowhere, it's a very well-used sidewalk. It is my belief, I work from home two days a week. My office is the kitchen table, which is the window that looks right out to High Street. I see walkers, runners, joggers, kids, the bus stop is that corner, and that's drawing kids from throughout the neighborhood. That, we have all kinds of folks in our neighborhood, but there are a lot of young kids, especially back in there on Dietrich and High, or not Kersey, who need that sidewalk connection. I'm a, Christie, as you know, I'm a Park Board alum. We believe in walkable communities. That's been something that we've really stressed. You know, just as recently as the tree lighting ceremony that was right after Thanksgiving. My dad, my stepmom, my sister, the two nephews, we all walked downtown. We cut through Kersey on the way down there. On the way back, it was dark out and we didn't feel safe cutting through there, so we walked up Fourth Street, which is a longer route. You know, I, there's definitely a need for that sidewalk through there. It's a safer option than going in the street.
Does anything stop us from narrowing the boulevard?
No.
To have the least intrusive sidewalks on, on the citizens? Other than consistency with Fourth Street or, or any other, I mean, on Sixth Street, the sidewalk is right on Sixth Street. We don't have a boulevard on that one.
How safe do you feel on that puppy? Anyway, yeah. I, listen, I have, I have a sidewalk in my front yard with a five-foot boulevard. And my front yard isn't massive, but I, I mean, I, I, it's, it will be a change. I, I get that it will be a change. But I, I mean, it's a sidewalk. It's, I don't, I don't, it's not gonna be in anybody's front porch. I mean, I think the closest that it's gonna be is probably 25 to 30 feet from somebody's home. So I mean, and whether there's differences in that or not, we're either committed to a connectivity in our community or we're not. We've talked about this at a design Carver level. We've talked about this at a comprehensive plan level. We've talked about it at a Parks Commission level, and we've talked about it at a Planning Commission level. And I know that it's unfortunate, it's a pain in the keister, but the reality is, is that for connectivity in our community, I, I cannot move forward on this project without sidewalks on Kersey Hill moving down to connect in front of St. Nicholas.
Okay, it looks like that's, that would be a three-two, so let's move on to the next issue.
Well, we're, our next issue then, um, I, I don't know that we have a next issue.
Well, the, the issue of Elm Drive, whether to make it-
Yeah, but I think these are all together. If we have one that doesn't make it, we don't have any.
What?
That's it. Go ahead.
If we don't have one, what?
I'm for a trail on Elm Drive.
Yeah, so am I.
Okay, there's two.
I mean, I'm, I mean, if we're gonna get to a point where we're going to-
Are we gonna break this down by each section or?
No, we're not gonna break it down by each section, but we have to give them plans for specs.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And if that includes a sidewalk or not, I, I don't know how you move forward with plans of, hey, three to two, we're not in this. Or does that mean that there are no sidewalks if it's three to two?
No. What I was saying was that it looks like Christie and I, who don't, who think it would be okay without the sidewalks, are not going to get that, that you three would want sidewalks, so sidewalks are in.
No, I disagree because it's gotta be four fifths.
No, that's for the total plan.
Okay, alright, I got you. I see where you're going. I'm picking up what you're laying down right now.
I mean, we need to give staff a direction.
I got you. You're right. You're absolutely right.
Alright. So the, uh, no one way on Elm Drive, are, are any of us in agreement with that? I mean, I think it has to be some sort of-
Trail is preferable.
Yeah.
Trail is preferable. I think he's unanimous. Is anybody not for the trail? Rich, my brother, except for that.
Sorry, Rich.
No, I think that one is, and just so that I'm-
The Hammerhead, right?
It's, it's-
The Hammerhead, right?
I think, but after you saw that other one, that we're gonna stay within the right-of-way of the city, it's gonna not infringe on your property for the trail. And you will, and you'll, you'll move right along. Cool, alright.
You guys are taking notes, right?
Yep, and then on Sunny-
I'm sorry, we just agreed on the Hammerhead?
No, we agreed on the trail.
Just the trail.
Unless you have another- No, I just wasn't clear.
I wanna make sure we talk about Sunny Ridge width.
We are talking about Sunny Ridge width right now.
And that it's, go ahead, whoever else has come up.
I, I, Sunny Ridge has to have parking. We can't have streets in our city that doesn't allow parking. So whatever width we need to have parking on one side, we gotta have parking.
I would be in favor of just keeping things consistent.
We're not taking, we're not actually taking any more public comment. I appreciate it though.
I, Courtney, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so my, I feel like we need to keep things consistent. There's Sunny Ridge that goes up the hill. What is the width of that? There's Dietrich that's a newer area. There's Kersey that's a newer area. Keeping that consistent so that it doesn't bow out or narrow down.
Sure. Does that make sense? Anybody having opposition to that?
Brent, can I ask you, uh, a few of the comments from the residents? Um, their questions were, that they, or comments were, they wanted the width to stay the same on Sunny Ridge? Or they were looking, can you, do you have some of that in your notes there?
Yeah, so-
We heard a lot of comment tonight, so I wanna make sure I have it right.
I think the sentiment was, there was some, the sentiment was to leave the width existing.
Yeah, they don't want anything.
We just, without doing an evaluation of what the current width is, um, it's hard for us to decipher, right?
But Sunny Ridge goes up to the north. And what Courtney is saying is that we're looking for continuity and standardization from Dietrich to Dietrich, Kersey Hill to Kersey Hill stop. And what we're asking for is, I think Courtney's saying is Sunny Ridge to Sunny Ridge.
Right. I think what you could, what we can do is, we can provide, when we get to the, when we get to the plans and specifications portion where the council's gonna approve it, we can present it in a certain way and if, let's just say we'll present it as like-
Sure.
Two, two buttons you can choose on, on a vending machine. You can choose the button that keeps the street width the same, and we can show you the pros and cons, or you can choose the one that, uh, makes it a standard section. But we don't know if-
Sure.
That could be the same thing, um, but-
Until we have more.
What I mean is tonight, you don't, we don't really need that level of feedback from the council because we'll have to do the research. And when you get to the plans and specs, then you tell us which button you wanna choose. Twix or peanut butter twix?
Got it.
Peanut butter twix.
Um, go ahead if you have a question.
No, so the consistency and how these roads all vary, that was not based on the newer portions in keeping that consistent. So Kersey, for example, and Dietrich.
I would say that the basis for the street widths comes from the city's standards back for like new development. So there, there's, you know, I live on Sugar Maple Court. There's a side of the street that's signed no parking because if you'd park on both sides of that street, it'd be tough to get one of our engines through to the bulb of the cul-de-sac, you know? And so there's certain street widths that accommodate parking on one side where you can get an emergency vehicle through. There's certain sides where you can park on both sides. Ultimately, it's not a problem until it's a problem. And so what, what'll typically happen is if it's not signed and there's cars parking on both sides and it doesn't accommodate it, and then someone calls in and says, I can't get through on Vernon Drive, someone will call the sheriff's office and Larry Lassard will say, I can't do anything because there's no signage on this street. So, yeah, that's a long-winded answer, but eventually that's what kind of we're protecting against. That's where the one side, two sides comes in because if there is a resident complaint, uh, the sheriff's office can only enforce what's signed.
We're trying to see things from 15,000 feet instead of each individual. We're trying to treat everything the same, which we should.
So we can provide, we can provide the council with an analysis on the existing street width on the unimproved area, the existing street width on what I'll call the improved areas of Kersey, Dietrich, and Sunny Ridge, um, and then provide the council with an opportunity to choose based on what you feel is the priority for the city at that time.
Just another question. Is there already no parking on one side of Old Elm?
There's no signage on Old Elm, as far as I know.
Okay, 'cause that's even more narrow than Sunny Ridge.
What I'm seeing on Sunny Ridge is it's 22.5 feet world wide right now, and we wanna expand it to 29. And the question before us is, what is Sunny Ridge going up the hill?
I think a fundamental piece to consider here is that these sections don't have curb and gutter. And so right now, if you're on Sunny Ridge or Elm, or any of these streets frankly, you can park up onto the grass a little bit.
Yep.
And if you're gonna have a high-back curb like Dan is suggesting, that's gonna limit your opportunity to park off the road. And so another thing to contemplate, and again, we can do that analysis, come back to you, and then you can provide us with that direction.
We've done this a long time and the reality is, is that people don't wanna pay for a road. I get that. But people don't want a narrow road either where you can't have family over. It's, we've talked about this forever. So, um, so what do you need in terms of what we have in front of us, um, to adopt a resolution feasibility report for the 2019? What clarification do you need us to have a four-fifths agreement on?
So we don't need, so the clarification points that you talked related to sidewalks on Kersey, the trail option on Elm and the street widths are all what I'd call staff feedback. They're not, so that's some pieces that we'll consider in the development of the plans and specifications. I would say they're unrelated to the actions that you're taking tonight. That's just feedback that we'll use as a staff. So you're not, when you vote on, uh, if the project is feasible and you vote on preparing plans and specs, you're not individually voting for sidewalks on Kersey or a trail option on Elm. It'll be used as a staff to generate the, the plans and specifications. And then we, we get to that point where the council reviews, you have to tell us if we hit the nail on the head or if we have to go back to the drawing board, uh, based on the information we provide you.
Can you reiterate how you're going to move forward then with the Sunny Ridge with the comments that you've received from council?
On Sunny Ridge?
We're not, we're moving forward in any-
Oh, I asked him if he could reiterate, um, what, what they took down as, as for guidance on, on Sunny Ridge Drive? And when we're talking about widths and things like that.
We're not.
I'm lumping Sunny Ridge, Dietrich, and Kersey all into one where we're gonna do an analysis of the existing street width on what I'd call the unimproved section, uh, what the-
So we're just saying move forward. That's all we're saying.
I, can I have?
But the street width is on the new section, and then we'll provide some data as it relates to, uh, recommended parking widths for, um, allowing parking, uh, the movement of emergency vehicles and such. And then we'll present that in the plans and specifications as a kind of a segregated topic and allow the council to noodle on it and then provide us with the direction when you adopt the final plans and specs.
Thank you.
So we have been talking about a lot tonight that is just input for the next meeting.
That's fair to say.
Okay, good. Then we could've made this resolution about an hour ago. But, alright, so I did, I entertain a motion to adopt, actually I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 172-18, receiving, uh, feasibility report for the 2019 infrastructure improvement project.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. I will second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comments, discussion?
You made the motion.
I did.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion on the next one.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution 173-18, ordering improvement in preparation of plans for the 2019 infrastructure improvements project.
It's a motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Uh, any further comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, can take a break. Smoke them if you got them. Take, uh, take seven minutes. Be back here at five to 10. That was like an hour and a half longer than it needed to be based on that.
Microphones are still live.
I, that's fine, but it's still an hour and a half longer than we needed it to be. And now it's just gonna be a whole nother discussion. I think that was a total waste of time. I mean, if you don't want feedback on that stuff for plans and specs, why'd we do it? We could've just ran right through that. Now you're not gonna get sidewalks.
I'm not following you.
You don't have to. It doesn't matter. It's all done.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight is the city's annual truth in taxation meeting. So what, what is truth in taxation? Uh, it's an opportunity for residents to have a, have some input to the council on the proposed property tax levy. All property owners in the city received a truth in taxation statement that showed a proposed levy for the city's school district, county, and other special taxing districts. This is an opportunity for the public to be educated on how property taxes are determined, understand the city's local budget, and become, uh, involved in helping the council set priorities related to the budget. So here's a sample tax statement. As you can see, in the upper right-hand corner is a, is a taxes payable year and it shows estimated market value. Um, sometimes this can be confusing for folks that aren't involved in the day-to-day of taxes, property taxes, values, et cetera. Uh, the estimated market value, which is shown on there, this meeting isn't an opportunity for folks to, um, talk about their values or contest their values. Uh, the opportunity for that is to go directly to the Carver County Assessor's Office, Angela Johnson, either by phone or email. And, uh, there's a process, uh, created for someone to dispute, uh, their value with the Carver County Assessor. Proposed property taxes, uh, so here's a sample. Again, it's, this is like getting your Excel, Center Point, and Cable bill all in one. Uh, the city only has an opportunity to discuss city property taxes, but you can see every jurisdiction, uh, has their actual from 2018 proposed based on the preliminary levy, uh, that each agency or government unit set in September and then when to attend that meeting. So you can see the, um, truth in taxation hearing was already set for, or already held for Carver County. And it's next Monday, uh, for the school district. There's also metro special, uh, taxing districts and there's some, uh, recycling pieces, uh, that are also shown. But this is the city of Carvers, so for this specific property, uh, actual taxes were 1646 in 2018 and 1816 in 2019, or proposed for 2019. And as discussed during the last public hearings of the anatomy of the budget, the city really has two operations, one, the enterprise funds. So the monthly utility bill, uh, new development connection fees, and in the case of the last project, existing connection fees or hookups. And those fund the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater funds. Uh, what we're discussing tonight is the, kind of the general operations, the city services, snow plowing, planning, elections, recreation, uh, human resources, et cetera. Um, and that's funded by, uh, property taxes, state aids, permits, fees, and fines. Uh, so our budget process, kind of in a nutshell, we start, uh, early in the summer, uh, start building a draft budget. We set up a series of council work sessions, um, in August through September, ultimately leading to the council sitting a preliminary levy, um, based on that anticipated or proposed budget for 2019. Uh, after that preliminary levy is set, it can be lowered but not raised. Uh, throughout the fall, staff and council work to review budget conditions, um, toward the end of November. And this, and since the county, Carver County sends out, uh, proper truth in taxation property statements. Uh, those are received, but you saw it earlier in the slide presentation. And tonight is the opportunity for residents to provide comment on those proposed property tax, uh, property taxes. The council will take that feedback, um, and then ultimately set a, uh, final levy and final budget at your next meeting on December 17th. Uh, revenue overview, uh, we usually plan pretty conservatively for new housing starts. Uh, we're planning for 65 housing starts in 2019. Projected revenue of 334,000, offset by a need for additional full-time building inspector, uh, which I'll get into later on in the slideshow. Uh, local government aid, about 113,000. Uh, the city is anticipating a special capital fund transfer, uh, from 2018. There's some significant projects that will need building inspector support from that'll likely be permitted in 2018. Uh, related to one project related to what you're reviewing tonight, uh, with the Trident development and then the second project, Lakeview Industries. Revenues, uh, for property taxes are about 77% of the overall revenue budget, uh, followed by fees and licenses, aids and grants, fire contracts. The one piece that the council asked, uh, to have included is franchise fees. Uh, 0% of the city's revenues, um, is related to franchise fees or generated by franchise fees. Uh, here you can see a kind of a area, a study related to franchise fees in Carver County. Um, this would be related to electric, gas, and cable. Um, as you can see, Carver along with Cologne and Mare. And Mare actually has a cable franchise fee, but they didn't have any reported revenues in 2017. So Cologne and Carver are really the standalones as far as, um, no franchise fees. And they happen to be both, two cities represented by Larry Harris. I don't know if that's a coincidence or not. Uh, 2019 draft expenditures debt service is at 29% of the budget and that's rate increased over public services from last year. And that's related to the new debt service from the city hall project. So related to that, 20-year debt service on the project, uh, just under 375,000. Uh, there's also new costs associated with building operations and maintenance. Broadway City Hall in, tax impact, uh, Springs, Springstead provided a scenario. Um, the chart that you see on your right is from the last, uh, projection that Springstead did in March of 2018 that shows estimated tax impacts on homes related to the project. That's that, that's the project though in a vacuum. It's not anticipating any of the other operations, uh, within the city. It's just the project as a standalone tax impact. It's just the project as a standalone tax impact. Other 2019 budget considerations, we've had a lot of discussion on a staff level for the JCP County Road 11 corridor, Jonathan Carver Parkway corridor. The city would be making its third of four payments in 2019. We're anticipating that there'll be an open house sometime early in 2019 and some more significant updates for the council as a part of that process. The 2019 budget includes the addition of a full-time building inspector. Again, 65 single-family housing starts on the low end, but also significant commercial projects, including inspections for the City Hall, senior housing, Lakeview Industries and Carver Square. The position graded out at grade 10, but has a starting pay of 55,000. With council approval, we'd start advertising for the position in January with an anticipated March first start date. Other 2019 budget considerations, step increase planned. Also, the council will consider taking action on the CPI increase to the overall pay scale at your December meeting. We do have three full-time employees that are at the top of their pay scale and would only be eligible for the CPI increase of 2%. That's also negotiated in the city's collective bargaining agreement. The 2019 budget also has funding for a part-time receptionist, administrative assistant to help out with front desk duties. Insurance, the city converted to a high deductible plan in 2017. In 2018, the city changed its provider from, I think it was Health Partners to Preferred One. The 2019 budget shows an increase to premiums of 14%. There's some workers' compensation increase and then basically inflationary increases to liability property and auto. The recreation services agreement, Carver receives resident rates for the community center, Town Course and Curling Center. Chaska staff also facilitates community events and a limited amount of programs. The 2019 cost for that program is 51,250, which is a 0% increase. We are in the last year of that agreement and so we're anticipating a discussion between Carver and Chaska related to negotiating different terms for that agreement. Some additional information related to that, 283 Carver resident-based memberships with a net membership savings of 43,158 rounds at the Town Course, 31 events scheduled in Carver. There are 11 events and programs canceled due to poor enrollment. And the city still had a struggle with the gazebo park concert series, but however, Open Gym at Carver Elementary, which is facilitated through the partnership, had 338 participants over eight sessions and is being planned to start again in 2019. And so the city should be pushing some information out relatively shortly on that. It's a free event or free participation for those interested. Other 2019 budget considerations are repainting of the city's caboose in Depot Park and the installation of a youth baseball field in the city's park system. Public services capital, brush mower, pickup truck, Polaris cart and Kubota tractor. Brian's on hand if the council or anybody else would like to discuss different pieces as part of the city's regular capital services or, excuse me, capital improvement program. Fire department considerations, the 2019 budget proposes an increase in training and on-call pay from 1150 to $12 an hour. Increases a stipend for the fire marshal from 1500 to 5,000. It's primarily due to the fire marshal has really taken a significant role in, due to plan review and is doing frankly an excellent job. As the council knows, we're going to be recognizing Ryan Gill at the next council meeting as one of the employees of the year in 2018. The 2019 budget, and I should say Ryan is the city's current fire marshal. The 2019 budget proposes an increase to the fire department's pension contribution from 2207 to 2307 per year service. There's also a reduction in the planned capital from 17,000 to $0 contribution in consideration of the proposed engine that the council will be considering in 2019. That's roughly about $600 some thousand dollars. The 2019 law enforcement package follows the kind of the same model, 40 hours a week of town cop coverage. We're working on opportunities for the council to meet. The new deputy Larry Lassard is going back out to general patrol and the city will have Deputy Kate Sandberg starting in January. So we'll create opportunities for the council to meet her. Continued partnership with Lake Town Township for evening patrol. So that's usually a Tuesday through Friday shift or a Wednesday through Saturday. Costs are up roughly 1% with associated costs for steamboat day service and the metro drug task force. At one point, the city was participating in a discussion with the city of Cologne and the sheriff's office for sharing part of the town cop model where Cologne would take two tenths of that 40-hour week. However, Cologne decided to go in a different direction and they're not looking at a town cop or deputy coverage at this point. Debt service, kind of an overview. You'll see the newest piece is the City Hall piece at 373,000. Still pointing out that if there's no additional development along the Levi Griffin corridor, starting in about 2021, the city will have $106,000 of additional debt service. The flip side to that is when that starts, the Mills Tiff District will have closed and so the city will have additional tax revenue from Mills that'll go back into the general coffers and that'll help pay for that $106,000, should there not be any development between now and then. Debt service levy history, you can see going back to 2015 how we've been tracking and you can see the significant increases relates to the City Hall addition to the debt service. And then that in graph form. And then the general levy history, so that's not everything but the debt. And so you can see that has gone down by two and a half under the draft 2019 budget. If you want to bear with us for one second. That in graph form. Total levy history, so this is a combination of the general levy and the debt service levy. You can see that's a 14.5% increase. But just alone adding the City Hall debt service payment, if you took no other action but just added that debt service payment onto the 2018 levy, you'd have a 15.8% increase over the final levy adopted for 2018. And then the city's total levy history in graph form from 2015 to proposed 2019. Tax rate history, Carver County cities, here you can see the city's tax rate going back to 2012 and then the preliminary levy set for 2019 in September. And then the table at your right shows the preliminary rates set by other Carver County cities in September. So you can see Chanhassen, the low end at 21% and then Hamburg at 140. And again, all these are subject to change. These are the max rates or the ceiling for the 2019 preliminary rates. Every council has the opportunity to lower them after going through the truth in taxation process. A big function of the budget and how it impacts the levy is value change. And so you can see the new construction for both residential and commercial are significant. But also about three lines down, you can see the market value change of 5.6% for residential. And that has an impact as it relates to tax impact. We consistently talk about the impact to a $300,000 home, but if you look at that and see the market change is 5.6, what we do is we add that 5.6, saying that that $300,000 home in 2018 has a different value in 2019. And that'll be explained in some later slides. So here, property tax calculation for 2018, based on that $300,000 home, had to pay 1382 in city of Carver property taxes for pay 19, using the proposed preliminary levy. That same $300,000 home would pay 1463 in city property taxes, which has an $81 difference. And this, the chart on the bottom or table on the bottom shows kind of the, this is the total impact of the City Hall tax impact for City Hall where, if you remember, the impact in March of 2018 showed $210. And that was in a vacuum. Here you can see kind of the impact for that $300,000 home at $81. In most cases though, a home's not going to stay at that same value. It's going to go at least up by that value increase of 5.6%. So we added that in for this calculation, which takes the value up to 316,000 and some change. And the city property taxes get to 1556. And that shows a city property tax increase of $174. So one of the things that we like to do is kind of bear that out and look at a cross-section of preliminary tax statements. And so the county really did a nice job of putting all those statements online. In the past, we had to request them by PID number and they charged us for them. Now they're all available online so we can access them. So here's kind of a cross-section of different property values. You can see in the green column how those changed from 18 to 19. And then the impact of tax rates from 2018 to 19, ranging from $79 of impact to 214 on a $469,000 home, $100,000 home. One of the other pieces that we look at is property tax represented as a monthly bill, something that people are maybe more familiar with. On a $300,000 home, 1463 in property taxes are $122 a month. And then we broke that out by what that would look like on a monthly bill for services. Also noting that franchise fees paid by residents and businesses is $0. So that concludes the overview. Happy to answer any questions related to the levy or budget for 2019.
Alright, I'll open the public meeting. So those wishing to address the city council should come forward and state their name and address for the record. After all comments are received, the public hearing will be closed and no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Do we have any public comments? Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Could I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. Brian, thanks for your patience, my friend. Come on up. Vicky Sanziden, liquor license application, Mr. Chilman. I understand.
Would you like to know? I don't like talking into these.
She'll start us.
Sure.
You're off the hook for a second.
Hopefully our technology wills.
I hate hearing myself.
You look super uncomfortable.
Big time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
What do you mean? Most of your audience is gone. Thank God for that.
They're all down at the Dog House right now.
I'm sweating bullets. I can feel I'm already changing colors.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Brian Chilman here has submitted applications for off-sale, on-sale, Sunday and the optional 2:00 AM liquor licenses. The first step in the process is that the Carver County Sheriff's Office completes a background check. And that background check has been completed and they have verified that no citations have been received and so they do not foresee any issues that we cannot proceed. The next step that would happen would be after the city council would approve these licenses, all of the required documentation would be sent into the state's alcohol and gambling enforcement division for their final approval. And the required documentation, along with the application forms, are listed there on the slide. And the fees for these particular licenses have been prorated through the end of June of 2019 because that's when all of the liquor licenses for the city of Carver expire and then they have to be renewed at that time. And these licenses would then go through that same renewal process as the other licenses. So for the council's consideration tonight, I have listed the two motions there. And Brian is here tonight. He's going to just give you a little bit of a background and both of us will be happy to answer any questions.
Go for it.
I'm looking forward to hopefully bringing some business to town, maybe with some car shows and whatnot. I've got about 20 years of bar experience, kind of on the spot now.
Where do you live?
Belle Plaine.
Okay.
Belle Plaine.
What's been in your bar experience? Have you owned another bar?
Johann's Bar.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Five years and then I sold out to my partner, whatever. And then, just been waiting to find something that's small enough, but Carver's a nice town. It's got a lot of...
You're going to continue to call the Dog House?
I believe, yes, yes. It's a historic town. I kind of like the small-town feel down here and then you got the new development on top. So it's definitely growing.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
Welcome to town.
Well, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve new liquor licenses for off-sale, on-sale and Sunday for the Dog House for December 15th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, including the extended existing patio area.
There's a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any other further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a new liquor license for the optional 2:00 AM liquor license for the Dog House for the period defined by the state's alcohol and gambling enforcement division.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Go late. Get after it.
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Brian.
Welcome to Carver.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Smith, land use applications. Trying to, you guys, are you guys ready?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are considering four land use items for Carver Ridge, the senior living redevelopment project at the Lenzin Bus Garage. So I'm going to move through all four and then we can discuss collectively. If you have questions, feel free to let me know, but I'll probably take them at the end since they're all pretty interrelated. So project location, most of you are probably pretty familiar. It's the former Lenzin Bus Garage site. It's located at 926 Street West. It's near community parks and the intersection of Sixth Street and Jonathan Carver Parkway. So tonight, we are moving through the remainder of the technical planning process. So if you'll recall, you saw this project first at September 4th at a concept level as well as a comprehensive plan amendment. So tonight, we're taking action on preliminary plat, rezoning and final plat, which will bring us through the formal planning process. So thinking through the site, how we're bringing preliminary plat and final plat through at the same time, this is permitted via the city code. And since it's one site, the plans are in really good shape. So staff feels comfortable moving forward with preliminary and final plat tonight. So a little bit of history of the project, I'll go pretty brief. If you'll recall, in December 2015, the city acquired the property. Then throughout the process, the planning commission was able to set guiding principles for what the site should look like, which ultimately has led us to this point tonight, working with Trident Development out of St. Cloud. The planning commission reviewed the same applications at the November 15th planning commission meeting. So they reviewed the rezoning, the conditional use permit that I'll get to, preliminary plat and final plat. They also held all required public hearings and they passed all four resolutions on a five to zero recommendation to the city council. So those guiding principles that the planning commission thought about and placed on the property, there was a preference towards senior living at a moderate price point. The existing berm and trees should remain, should not be more than two stories, appearance should look residential, the development should be complementary and a focus on garden area and landscaping should be incorporated. So those guiding properties have brought us to the point here tonight with Trident Development and the Carver Ridge project. The project has been called Sunny Ridge previously. We had a discussion with the city's fire marshal and he felt that there would be a little bit of confusion if someone called the 911 line and said simply, "I'm at Sunny Ridge," knowing that the neighborhood to the north is also called Sunny Ridge. So we have moved to Carver Ridge for the name of the project for clarification. In the draft, in the 2030 comprehensive plan, the property was guided for... In the draft, in the 2030 comprehensive plan, the property was guided for low-density residential. Through the planning process, the city acquiring the property, and the Planning Commission determining those guiding principles, it was determined that a high-density use was more appropriate. So, in the draft 2040 plan, it is drafted as high-density. There's also been a comprehensive plan amendment that's been processed by the Met Council to take the property from low-density to high-density to allow the project to develop. So, thinking through one of the first requests, it's rezoning. So, the project is requesting an R3 PRD zoning district. So, R3 is the highest density type. It speaks to town homes. It speaks to apartments. Our city code doesn't call specifically for densities. The comprehensive plan does. So, the R3 district is the closest match to the Carver Ridge project, but the 2030 comprehensive plan also supports this project with the, uh, amendment that allowed for high-density residential. Then, thinking through the PRD, or the planned residential development, this is a planning tool that we can use that allows flexibility from the strict zoning classifications. So, it typically applies to unique projects that are not typical single-family homes that we see most often in Carver. And if you think about the R3 district and Carver Ridge, there's actually only one variation from the city code, which is interesting, thinking about this unique project, and that's the reduction of the front yard setback from 25 to 23 feet. So, as part of the PRD rezoning ordinance, there is also language included for a conditional use permit. So, through the city code, a residential care facility is a conditional use in all districts. So, a conditional use permit allows us to take a closer look at a project and set some additional conditions specific to that project. So, the conditions listed largely relate to the emergency access route that's included in the property. So, specific conditions for the pro, project include that the emergency access is perpetually available. The access will be maintained. There's one access point to the site, and all parking must be contained within the site. So, if someone, uh, is coming to visit, or there's a large amount of staff, they all need to be within the parking lot, since Sixth Street is a collector, and there's no parking. So, making sure that parking stays contained in the site, and that the project operates as shown in the construction plans. So, on the screen now is the preliminary and final plat, which is a tech, technical zoning document that shows the lot lines, property lines, and easements. And then, thinking through that fire access that I talked about. So, Ryan Gill, the city's fire marshal, did an outstanding job on this project. He met with several other cities to talk about access, what it needs to look like. This plan is a little bit unique, that you can see a fire truck on the plan, so you can see their route, actually, which is interesting. So, there is a fire access route that shows how they will navigate the site, and showing that they are able to meet the conditions to make the turning radiuses that they need. So, on the site, you will see to the far west, there is a fire access route. So, that route does not go all the way around the building, but does include a hammerhead that would allow emergency services to get to a majority of the back of the building. It's not anticipated that the project would need to use that emergency access ever. It's typically in places where, uh, there's a storm, the building gets struck by lightning, the sprinkler system fails. All of those would need to happen for that fire access route to be new, be used. Do you have a question about that? Do you want me to?
I was chatting.
No, she explained it perfectly to me. If I needed you, I would have asked.
Sorry.
So, thinking about what that does for the neighboring property owners, and thinking about those guiding principles that were important, there was a, a lot of information that the berm should remain intact, and landscaping is important. So, I've had several conversations with people who live essentially south of this project, talking through what it will do to their property. So, on the screen right now is an aerial of the site with the grading plan overlaid on top. So, it shows where that hammerhead access will be. I had a discussion with our engineering staff today, thinking about creating a visual of what it would be like to stand on Kirchi Hill Drive and look to the project, and what difference it would make. And there, there's not going to be a difference. So, the fire access route is going to be cut into the berm. There's going to be an eight-foot retaining wall, and then, a nine-foot retaining wall on the sides. So, from Kirchi Hills, there's not going to be a change. It'll all be interior to the site. Also, on top of that retaining wall, there will be a privacy fence. And I worked with the development team today about some additional landscaping being added to that hammerhead, since there will be a removal of some trees to make sure it stays consistent, uh, stays that people on the other side continue to have their privacy with limited restriction on their view. So, thinking about walkability for the site and the type of residents that might be living there. So, the fire access route does play into a larger trail system that's on site. So, the red dotted lines show a proposed sidewalk, uh, and trail configuration on the property. The green is existing trail along Sixth Street, which is the collector. So, this will link in well to community park, and also downtown, should residents choose to use it, or visitors to the site. Something else to note is on the east property side, there's also a garden area that includes a pergola with landscaping. So, there is that outdoor component that we were looking for with some of the landscaping requirements. So, thinking about that landscaping plan, Trident has given us a pretty robust amount of plantings, both along the foundation of the project, as well as throughout the parking lot. So, it's a mix, uh, both of shrubs and perennials. So, you'll see, uh, the site has a lot of opportunity for mature growth of plants. This plan shows the overstory trees. So, thinking about the existing evergreens that are on the perimeter of the site, there also will be the addition of several overstory trees, primarily near the entrances, but also near the ponds, to give it a more residential feel. We had a couple of questions related to lighting, both from the council, as well as surrounding property owners, thinking about light pollution, safety for the site specifically. So, there are, um, poles that are within the parking lot, and we have asked the developer to use the lights that are on Levi Griffin Road in the Parkin Ride, which primarily point down. There's also a pretty technical, uh, lighting spec that was given to the city, and it's not anticipated that light pollution will impact property owners either on the south or north, nor...
Yeah.
Okay. So, when we had talked about this last time, I had asked for a little bit more decorative type of lighting. Can you explain what this lighting exactly looks like? I can't picture it.
Yeah.
It's not Cobra Head, though.
No, it's the...
She emailed it today.
It's the Shepherd's.
She sent an email today with the picture.
Oh.
It's a Shepherd's with a larger bulb on the bottom. So, it's on Levi Griffin. It's proposed to be on Monroe. It's in the Parkin Ride. So, it's, it's a more decorative light than the Cobra.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry, I didn't see your email you sent this.
That's okay.
Today.
So, back to the project specifics. So, tonight, we're considering the rezoning request to R3 PRD with a conditional use permit, preliminary plat, and final plat to allow development of Carver Ridge proposed by Trident Development out of St. Cloud. I'll open it up for questions, and then, I have a screen for proposed motions to help you out when we're ready.
Any questions? I'm sensing no.
I have no questions. I appreciate you going into the detail about the cut into the berm for the fire truck turnaround, because there were some concerns there. So, I appreciate you explaining it the way you did, and I think that it'll be well-received.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 17-218, rezoning property from agriculture to an R3 with a planned residential development overlay and conditional use permit.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hank.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 170-18.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, hey, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Can I? So, at the Planning Commission, it was brought up that there was thought that there was already Carver Ridge?
Yes. So, uh, Joey brought that up at the Planning Commission meeting. That was the name of a plat. So, I would say people who probably aren't on the Planning Commission
Her memory.
Probably wouldn't remember.
Okay.
Carver Ridge. It was a plat.
Okay, thank you.
And I ran that through the city's-
It's not a development?
No.
All right, we'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 171-18, approving final plat for Carver Ridge.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hank.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, you can say it, Mike.
9.3 TIF agreement, Trident. Mr. Steinman, not Mr. Steinman. I know, I know Mr. Steinman. You're better-looking than Mr. Steinman.
Thank you. I'll make sure to tell him that.
Tell him he missed out on a good council meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna definitely let him know about that.
He owes you one.
He so owes you.
Thank you, guys. You don't have to stay. We're gonna approve the TIF, too.
Thank you. Tom Denaway with Springstead, uh, city's public financial advisory firm. Uh, I do our economic development. Uh, tonight, we're here to talk about-
Are you in the Galtier Building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
How do I get there?
How do you?
So, I walk that all the time, and it's on this-
What?
Never mind.
See him offline.
Go ahead.
Near between Fifth and Sixth Street. Uh, so, yeah, I'll try to just really be real brief about this. So, previously, on October 1st, you guys, uh, held the public hearing and adopted approval of the creation of the Tax and Increment Financing District for this project. That Tax and Increment Financing Plan that was approved gave you authority to enter into future obligations. The action in front of you tonight is, uh, would be the action on, uh, executing a development agreement that would provide an obligation for the city on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, I think everybody's familiar with the project, uh, the site. I'm just gonna jump right to the main highlights of the development agreement and, uh, the main deal points. So, it's an agreement, uh, drafted between the city and Carver ALF Partners LLC. So, the development agreement contemplates providing the developer with reimbursement in the amount of $2,331,300 in TIF-eligible set improvements and infrastructure, uh, as well as contamination cleanup and other TIF-eligible expenses. And that would be on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, the payment of that obligation would only come from, uh, increment that was generated by the project. So, approximately 90% of the captured increment would be used to pay that. The city would retain 10% administrative, uh, retainage. The city would have no obligation to satisfy any shortfall in the event that the TIF revenue was less than projected, or that amount was not completely paid off at the end of the term. Uh, the developer would also receive reimbursement at an interest rate of, uh, 4% annually on the incurring of those costs, uh, prior to the repayment. And most importantly, the reimbursement has been limited to a shorter period than the maximum statutory term of the TIF district. So, the reimbursement is limited to a 21-year period, which is anticipated, anticipated to be 2021 through 2041. It's, uh, housing TIF district could go out for a total of 26 years. This incre, this development agreement has a shorter term, which will ensure that the development district or the TIF district will be decertified at the end of 2041. Uh, additionally, the, the agreement obligates the developer to commence the project no later than June 20, or June 1, 2019, and for, and for construction to be completed by December 31st, 2020. And in addition to this, the developer will also have to provide documentation each year to the city, providing verification that they have provided the affordable units that they're required to provide in order to maintain qualification as a affordable housing district. So, in order for them to receive their annual payment, or semi-annual payments, they will have to provide documentation to the city. So, I think that hits all the high points of, uh, the development agreement. Uh, your next steps, if you so choose, would be do adopt the resolution authorizing the execution, if you're interested in doing so. And, uh, with that, I'll set for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Steinman? Better half.
Yeah, thank you.
Why was the term, uh, shortened to 21 years instead of 25?
Uh, it was shortened to give this, to provide the city with a quicker benefit in order to have the property. So, once this property, or once the development agreement is paid off, or the district's decertified at the end of that 21-year period, this property will come back onto the general tax base. So, the city will realize that benefit of, of that increased market value on the site. So, the idea was just to try to shorten the term of that district as much as possible, while still having a, a workable amount and a workable agreement with the developer in order to see, in order for the city to realize the benefit as, as soon as possible.
21 years was the magic number.
What was that?
21 years was the magic number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 169-18, um, a resolution authorizing execution of a development agree, agreement.
It's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, welcome aboard. Thanks for staying. Appreciate your patience. Uh, moving forward to 9.4 floodplain ordinance. Ms. Smith.
Before we get to 9.4, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to jump back to 6.1, just to kind of touch on something that I think was maybe miscommunicated. It's acceptable to the Mayor and Council.
We've already made the decision to go back and work, look at plans and specs at a different time. What more do we have to talk about this that isn't covered in that?
What I'd like to share is, so, it's, the council has the flexibility. So, when I said that you didn't have to do it, you don't have to do it, but you had the opportu, you have the opportunity to adopt it with certain parameters. So, I, my interpretation of the council is that you thought that you didn't have that ability. You do have that ability. It's your choice to, you could remove sidewalks, or keep sidewalks in as a part of your resolution, but you don't have to. And I think that was taken as you shouldn't. And that wasn't my direction. That wasn't my intent. So, I just wanted to be clear with that. It's council's prerogative how you want to move forward. Thank you.
9.4? Unless anyone has a stronger feeling, but 9.4. All right, 9.4.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are just-
Never mind. I'll ask somebody after the meeting.
We're discussing the FEMA floodplain ordinance. So, flood insurance is required for a federally-backed mortgage based on, uh, updated maps from FEMA that will be adopted on December 21st, 2018. So, we are required to update our ordinance by that time to have language that matches those maps. So, to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, the ordinance is required to be updated. Uh, the DNR must review and approve this ordinance. A lot of the language in the draft ordinance was provided from the DNR. They have a lot of information that's required to meet the standards for the national-
To make it as boring as possible.
I know, for the National Flood Insurance Program. So, through that, um, we need to have this ordinance adopted before the maps. So, December 3rd adoption tonight, before the December 21st maps.
Any questions?
Do you want me to run through the rest?
Do you want to go through the rest?
Again?
Go to the last page, please.
Okay.
There we go.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 16-2018, amending the floodplain ordinance into the city code.
It's a motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, we're now-
Sorry, Darren.
What's that?
It's sorry, Darren.
Um, 9.5, performance review of Brent Merrick, city manager. Um, we took a good 45 minutes to an hour this afternoon, um, to talk about the performance of Mr. Merrick for the last, uh, calendar year. Um, and I think it was unequivocally, um, as almost always, uh, one of the best reviews, uh, that we do give. Um, I think it's probably the best review Brent gives as well. Um, I think we have come to a conclusion, uh, and a consensus that, uh, one of the best things that has occurred in this city is the hiring of Brent Merrick. Um, I can tell you that personally, working with Brent for the last nine years, um, more importantly, I think the last four years, um, in the capacity of mayor, um, I can't imagine my life being any easier, um, than the expertise of what Brent Merrick brings to the table. Um, he protects me in meetings. Um, he makes me prepared for meetings. Um, he doesn't let people step on our toes as a city. And I am walking away from 20 years of service to this city, um, with the full, uh, capacity of wondering, excuse me, full capacity of, um, fulfillment that Brent will take this city. Um, whatever anyone up here needs, um, or can conceive of, Ms. Sayer as well, um, please rely on Brent, because he's that good. Um, I think we had a consensus amongst, well, it wasn't a consensus. Glenn and I both stated that, um, in our experience, Brent's the best city man- that, in our experience, Brent's the best city manager in the state, and I would concur with that, and I would hold true to that statement. I think across the board, majority of fives for what Brent brings to the table, and I don't think there's anybody better, and I think I'm speaking as a council, leading this city forward for at least the next four years. Does that sum it up?
Pretty much.
All right.
For the next four years?
I don't know, I think he's gonna be around four years.
That's not actually, really, that's not actually funny.
I was hoping it would be longer than that, but...
There's nothing funny about joking about terminating somebody's employment, but we'd move on to communications. Councilmember Monroe.
I would like to reiterate what you've just said about Mr. Merrick. It has been my distinct pleasure to work with you. You're a fabulous leader, and I feel like the city's in really good hands. Thank you. That's all I got, man.
Johnson?
I reiterate everybody's comments about Brent being terrific, so congratulations on a great review.
Mock?
I guess I'll go with the same. And then also, I wanted to thank the Fire Department and the Lions Club for putting on the Carver Village Christmas last Saturday up at the fire station, so we appreciate the use of that building, and the time and energy it takes for city staff, Fire Department, and the Lions to take care of that, so thank you.
Hank?
You did a remarkable job summarizing Brent's employment. He's stellar at his job, and he keeps the city in good hands, and it makes our lives really simple. Other than that, we did not have a, we don't have a Parks Commission meeting this month, so... That's all I got.
I would just have that our Fire Department, the Fire Relief, Brent and I actually sat in on a Fire Relief meeting, was probably, had the potential to be one of the most contentious meetings I've ever been a part of, and I think this kind of boils back to Brent's review as well. I think the relationship between the Fire Relief and what Brent has done in the last four years as I've been mayor, and I'm taking zero credit for this, the relationship between the city and the Fire Department has grown to the point where being witness to the meeting that we had the other night was actually one of the most enjoyable things I've done in my 20 years here. The growth, the maturity of the Fire Department, and walking through, and almost everybody in that room looked to Brent for guidance, it was amazing, and so kudos to you, and kudos to that relationship with the department. Aaron, Dan, Larry, Brian, Vicki, Brently, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's a motion by Councilmember Henry.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.